We will now begin the pre-meeting for the February 6th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have someone to present the agenda this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Go ahead and get started. All right. Tonight, we have some old business, items 1A and 1B. This is a request for a conditional use permit for the sale and service of alcohol by the drink at 300 Sondren Street. The applicant is proposing to open a bar and grill in one of the multi-tenant buildings on that site. Hours of operations are 6:00 AM to 1:30 AM. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with our standard CUP conditions that cover restaurants as well. So, any questions on that?
All right. Let's go on to the next item.
All right. That takes us to new business, item 1A. This is a site plan for a hospice facility at 2290 Technology Drive. This is the second phase of the project. The first building they built was closer to Technology Drive. I believe that was more of an office-type building. The proposed building is just about 11,800 square feet. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan with the following conditions. Update the utility providers to reflect Wentzville Fire and then provide top and bottom elevations for the retaining wall. Here's the site plan. This is the back half of the site. So you can see the building and then the detention basin at the very back. And then you can see a little bit of the building that's in the front at the very bottom of the page. And here are the elevations of what that will look like. Any questions on this one?
When this first came for approval, I think the mayor was talking about them guys getting together with the hotel or they're trying to figure out a... Did they get that figured out as far as the entrance and so on and so forth yet?
I guess I don't remember the specifics of that. I know they did end up changing their access from what was originally approved due to location of utilities and just issues with getting through that. So I don't know if there's anything more to say about that. If there's... I don't know if Wade or David know, have any more information on that?
Actually, Wade and I were just trying to remember the details and I'm failing to... I know we went back and forth. I know Mr. Eric will know. He's nodding his head, but I don't... I can't sit in here right now. I don't know that off the top of my head. But I... They are in the first building and it's been finalled, the building, yeah.
Well, you guys are satisfied with it, then?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if they're still in escrow, but, yeah.
Yeah, I got some emails today and I'm actually reviewing them right now. One question was right at the front. It looked like there was some widening to occur as you actually turn out to the right. And I don't believe that was done. I know it sounds like there were some discussions about utilities and maybe the cost to do so, but I do need to dig into that more and find out what occurred there, so.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Let's go on to the next item.
Okay. Next is new business, item 2A. This is a request for a site plan for Phase 2 of the law enforcement training facility on Highway 79. This phase includes all the remaining buildings and the EVAC track for training. There is a 26,000-square-foot classroom building with kennels, a 3,200-square-foot pavilion for the shooting range that was included in Phase 1, a 10,000-square-foot simulation facility, a 4,000-square-foot vehicle maintenance building, and then a couple obstacle courses. All the improvements on the site will be enclosed by a fence and gates that are proposed around the perimeter of the site. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan with some of the following conditions. Plant trees along the front edge of Highway 79 and down Furmer Road. Provide building heights as measured to the peak of the roof. Provide tree preservation calculations. And provide a passive trash enclosure and details. So here's the site. Pretty much Phase 1 was grading and getting the detention to flow to the back of the site and then the gun range in the north-west corner of the site. And then everything else will be included as part of Phase 2. And then here are... Here's the elevation of that main classroom building. So we'll take any questions on any of that?
Commissioner Howard?
The package includes a traffic study that was a draft and it's incomplete. Do we have a complete traffic study yet?
I don't believe we have a complete one. The applicant will be able to talk more about that and why it's not complete yet. So, yeah, I guess I don't have any more details on that.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go on to the next item.
Okay. Next is new business, item 3A. This is a request for a site plan at 1621 Kemar Court. They are proposing a building addition of 23,600 square feet. They're also proposing to expand the gravel area as part of this plan. They will need to have a variance approved by the Board of Adjustment. If that's not approved, they'll need to revise their plan to show that as a paved area. The proposed building addition will match the existing building with the metal siding. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan with the condition that they will need to get that variance approved. And to show the limits of the landfill, there are some limits on where improvements can be made in relation to landfills. And then the addition will need to have a fire suppression system and they'll need to work with their architect on that, so. Here's the site plan. This portion of the building down here is what is the addition, just connecting to up here. Like I said, most of this they are showing as gravel, so they'll need to get the variance approved for that. And then here's pictures of the existing building. The addition is just going to match what this looks like on the exterior, so. Any questions on that?
I don't see any, so let's go on to the next item.
Okay. Takes us to new business, items 4A and 4B. This is a conditional use permit for a convenience store without fuel sales at 615 West Ridge Drive. The applicant has stated snacks, beverages, groceries, liquor, tobacco, hot food, toiletries, and over-the-counter medicines, and they are proposing to be open 24/7. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with our standard conditions. And then here's that plaza. They're going to be at the far bottom, the south end of that plaza. They're only taking up one unit, so. Any questions on that?
Yes, Commissioner Howard?
This is going from kind of a strip mall with daytime businesses, insurance officers and those types of things to a 24-hour convenience store? And there's no lighting on the parking lot. Closest lighting is a street light that sits out near the curb, and I didn't know how that was going to be addressed.
We didn't have a condition on it. That's something that we can look into or can be added as a condition, if that's something you would like to do. But, yeah, we did not have, I guess, have that as a condition, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Let's go on to the next item.
Okay. Takes us to new business, item 5A. This is reapproval of a site plan for a telecommunications tower at 3605 Highway K. This was first approved in November of 2023. Since then, they have been working on their construction plans but ran into issues with grading. Ended up being more extensive grading than they were expecting. So now they are proposing to move that tower about 25 feet to the south. With that, that changes a little bit of their grading and their entrance drive back to the site. The new location still meets all of the same fall zone requirements and it's not any higher than what it would have been. So staff is recommending approval of that site plan with the same conditions from the first approval. So here's what was first approved. You can kind of see here the drive coming in off of K and then it comes back up a little bit. This is their new plan where it goes a little further back, but instead of coming back up to the north, it just goes straight back. So that will get them where they need to be to not have as much grading to do and cut down more trees, so. Any questions on that?
All right. Let's go on to the next item.
All right. That takes us to new business, items 6A, 6B, and 6C. This is a conditional use permit and site plan for Starbucks with a drive-through at 609 South Main Street. The site used to be Burger King. They've since moved out. They're looking to renovate the exterior of the building and change a few things with the site circulation for the drive-through lane. The western entrance will be widened a little bit to allow three lanes. One of those will be specifically for the drive-through and then an entrance and exit lane for the parking lot. And then they're reconfiguring the drive-through a little bit to allow for more stacking. And then they are converting the southern entrance to an exit-only, and then that will serve as their escape lane from the drive-through. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the standard conditions and then also recommending approval of the site plan with the condition that they provide their loading space calculations, provide approvals from Fire District, Sanitary, Water District, and to provide a sanitary effluent survey. So here is the site plan. The biggest change is up here where they're widening this so that the drive-through lane will be able to, you know, come back to here, but then traffic can still flow in and out to the parking lot. And then, like I said, this will be an exit-only going that way. And then here are the elevations. Any questions on this one?
Try.
It's pretty congested over there with that Taco Bell, you know, and this place. What are they going to do with that parking lot?
The parking lot for...
The whole area over there.
The whole area. I don't think there's much conflict between the two. This... Let's see, here we go. This is an exit-only as well, so that's kind of right across from where the Taco Bell drive-through exit is, so it's not like there's going to be cars coming in and out at that location. It'll just be out exits onto Maria Lane, so I don't... We don't envision any major conflicts.
That's true.
Yes, Commissioner Seymour.
On that subject, the stacking out on the Main Street. You've got the intersection right there, also the on-ramp to 70, plus you have the service road. So you've got a lot of congestion right in the area. You don't have a whole lot of stacking room getting into that intersection. You've got people coming off 70, making a left turn, going underneath the overpass. I hope you looked at that real carefully, maybe reexamine any kind of a traffic study because that is a real pinch point with all those fast-food restaurants, everything dumping right there going south on Main Street. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely. That is for sure.
It's something worth looking at and double-checking. I think you're right that we should be concerned with that.
Yeah, so that is for sure a very heavily trafficked part of Main Street right there. I guess what I will say is that they're stacking with the changes they made to the site, they have, let's see, 16 stacking spaces in the drive-through. I believe they're only required 6 to 12, I believe, for a drive-through for a restaurant. So they're over what our code requires. I don't envision more than that, maybe a little bit at peak times. But, you know, like I said, there is still access to that parking lot. If, you know, someone, you know, sees a line backed up all the way out to Main Street, they can still get into and go to the parking lot and go inside, so.
Oh, yeah, so I'm talking about coming out the other end of the parking lot, too.
Coming out the exit there?
Right. Was that Murray Lane? Plus, you've got traffic exiting, coming from the other direction, too, Taco Bell and...
Yeah.
You know, so that area there in the afternoon gets really congested.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner.
If I'm understanding that correctly, they're taking out the exit onto West Terra Lane and using that as a stacking?
To... So West Terra Lane down here, they're making this an exit-only, so traffic won't be able to come in this way due to the flow of the drive-through. So that's just going to be an escape lane, and then their employees are parking. This is designated as employee parking, so there shouldn't be much traffic going through there. Just if you're in the drive-through lane and want to get out of the drive-through lane, you can escape that way, so.
But if you go in and sit down, you can't get out that way, correct? Unless you go through the...
If there's no one in the drive-through, you could sneak out that way?
Okay. I just think that would probably solve some of the traffic concerns, right, that is getting on to the Main Street, right? If we had that as an exit for customers versus blocking it off with the drive-through lane?
Do you have any other comments? Okay. All right. I'd say let's go on to the next item on the agenda.
Okay. All right. That takes us to new business, 6A, 6B, and 6C. This is a conditional use permit and site plan for a gas station and convenience store at 418 South Main Street. They are proposing a quick trip, about 6,000 square feet with 14 fueling stations under two canopies. They are proposing to widen Daniel Drive to allow for a left-turn lane, a right-turn lane, and then a through lane. Staff does have concerns regarding the access to the site, specifically the full access on Main Street. Staff believes that that presents a safety issue with the left-turning movements because of limited and potentially blocked sightlines. So staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit. We're also recommending approval of the site plan with the following conditions. Due to potential safety and sightline concerns with the proposed full-access point onto South Main Drive, convert this entrance into a ride-in, ride-out access only as reviewed and approved on the construction site plans. The minimum parking space is 9 by 19, so we'll need to revise that. And then be aware that city staff is working with AMRIN for an estimate to relocate the overhead power lines underground as part of the Main Street Phase 2 project. Work with staff to coordinate these plans, coordinate with the city on Main Street improvements to determine timing to avoid duplication of construction. Construct your entrance, sidewalks, and curb and gutter. So here is the site plan. See, over here, they're going to have a dedicated left and right turn lane as well as a lane to come in and go back to that subdivision. We do... Yeah, we do have concerns with this entrance here. If a car is stopped here, that pretty much blocks all of your sightlines, so we do have concerns about that. And then here is the elevation of the building in rendering, so. Any questions on that?
I don't see any, so...
Okay. All right. That is it.
All right. Well, we'll take a recess until 7:00, and we'll start the regular meeting. Thank you. We will now begin the February 6th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Tracy, can you do the roll call?
Chairperson Carolyn Thomas.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Nunnery.
He's excused.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilwoman Cook.
Present.
Commissioner Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Seymour.
Present.
Commissioner Nogger.
Present.
Commissioner Boust.
Present.
Commissioner Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Lammers.
Present.
Commissioner Link.
He's excused.
Commissioner Wexler.
Present.
Commissioner Egdmeyer.
Present.
Mayor, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to take a moment of silence for Ron Epps. He was a former P&amp;Z Commissioner and a current City Councilman for the City of O'Fallon who just recently passed away. Okay, members of the Commission, you have in front of you the agenda for this evening's meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting?
So move, Howard. Second, see one.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the February 6th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting agenda. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
Okay. The agenda for the February 6th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is approved. At this point in the meeting, we open it up to citizens' comments. We have several comment cards here. Most of those have a public hearing or a public comment, so we'll leave those to come forward at that time when that item is being discussed. We do have one person who wants to speak during citizens' comments, Mr. Deanoff.
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is RNC AC Deanoff, running for O'Fallon City Council and also the city public advocate. A couple issues that I have are, number one, it would be G1, 2290 Technology Drive for a hospice center. I believe if you read our code and you also look at state statute in terms of the chapter governing planning and zoning, it requires a public hearing. And so I don't have any problems with a hospice facility. Unfortunately, it's needed for families who have long-term issues or some issues where the person is not going to make it very long-term, and hopefully it's a respid-type area. So I don't have any major concerns, but I do believe that it should require a public hearing or a public comment, period. The next issue is 2400 Missouri Highway 79, the O'Fallon Law Enforcement Training Center, which is very controversial at the state capital between O'Fallon and St. Louis County. St. Louis County was given $50 million appropriation from the state legislature and O'Fallon got zero. This facility is going to cost another $30 to $50 million to construct with the current Phase 2 and all the phases. What I'm very concerned about is the noise from the firing range, especially the bouncing off of neighborhoods that are on top of the hills of Missouri 79 in North O'Fallon. And I'm also very concerned that the cart was put before the horse in terms of... There's no traffic study that's been completed. So how in the world can you even look at this proposal or this information without a valid and correct traffic study when it hasn't even been completed? And that's really kind of wrong. But, of course, you're the city, so you have the power and control, and I guess you can do whatever you want because the city is the applicant. So we've got a problem here where we've got competing law enforcement centers, and then St. Louis or St. Charles County has a expanded $3 million in new investment in their law enforcement training center and push wildlife. So we've got duplication of services and not enough people to use those spaces. The next issue is site plan for 1621 Kemar Court. Again, this is a landfill site. It needs a lot of new ramifications and to bring it up to specifications of our city code. I'm against having this person have a gravel driveway. Of course, they'd have to get a variance from our City Board of Adjustment, but it just goes against our code and it's unfair to other property owners in O'Fallon. And finally, 3605 Missouri Highway K, I'm opposed to the wireless telecommunications facility monopole. It's going to be not current technology in about five or 10 years. We're going to move to satellites, and there's no bonding requirement to remove it when it becomes obsolete.
Mr. Deanoff.
Yes, ma'am.
Your time's up.
Okay. You can be respectful, though. Thank you.
All right. We have no other comment cards completed, so we'll close the citizens' comments at this time. The first item we have under old business this evening, we need a motion to remove from the table. This is the Dog House Bar and Grill. This is for a conditional use permit and for a conditional use permit regarding this property. So do we have a motion to remove this item from the table?
So move, Howard. Second, Seymour.
All right. We have a motion and a second to remove this item from the table. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right. This item is now open for discussion. Do we have someone here to present this item?
This is my first time ever doing this.
Name and address.
My name's Marshall Burton, and the address is 300 Sondren Street, O'Fallon, Missouri, the Dog House Bar and Grill.
So let's know what you want.
Oh, I just... I grew up in this town. I've been here my whole life, 44 years, and I just... I've been wanting to open up another, like, bar and grill, like a hometown bar and grill where, like, you get off of work and it's a nice place to go, and I just... I think this town's kind of missing that. We used to have a lot of them, and it's just like somewhere you can go and take your family, have a good meal, and, you know, that's what I want. So I seen the building was open, and I just... I was like, I always wanted to open that back up, so I was... Here I am.
All right. Members of the Commission, does anyone have any questions or comments? Commissioner Howard? Did you have some? I'm sorry. Your last name's Merton?
Burton.
Burton, okay. All right. So have you ever had this type of restaurant or bar?
I've never had a bar and grill. I've had a lot of body shops. I've had a lot of businesses, and I had rental homes and stuff. And I just... As I got... Like, I guess I'm getting older. I just... I just... I think it'd be really great because, like, I grew up here, and I remember, like, we used to have a lot of them in this town, and I went there when I was a kid, and it was just like everybody knew everybody, and it was just... It was kind of nice, and nothing bad about a lot of the newer businesses, but you go there and no one knows anybody, and it's just kind of nice to go to a place where, you know, you know someone. Like, it's just kind of like a, you know, kind of a hangout. And it's just kind of nice to go to a place where, you know, you know someone, like, it's just kind of like a, you know, kind of a hangout, kind of like Waffle House used to be or whatnot, you know? But yeah.
So have you gone through the staff conditions?
Yes, and we got, I'm working with the building department and all that. We had an architect come in the building and trying to just go through everything and get everything done that you guys needed. So I'm pretty sure we pretty much got about everything lined out. And then if there's anything else that comes up, I mean.
So, I mean, so you understand what these conditions require and you don't have any problem?
No.
Oh, can we share, Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to ask you a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Do you anticipate having any live entertainment there?
Every once in a while, like on the weekends, we just want to have like a band or like, you know, like, just like either a band or like a DJ and stuff like that, yes. And we have like, on the one part of it and the drawings, it's got like the band area and then a DJ booth set up and all that, yes.
Okay, and you're aware there is no noise ordinance?
Definitely.
Okay, all right. Do you, what kind of food are you planning on selling?
Oh, we're going to have a little bit of everything. We're going to have like steak dinners, like bacon cheeseburgers, fries, like a full menu, not like just a bar menu, not just like mini tacos and stuff like that. We're going to have like good food. And it's going to be like more of like a home-cooked food, you know, like you get, it's going to be nice. I'm actually excited myself, so.
Now, is there going to be any, any outdoor seating?
No, there's no outdoor seating.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, well, this is a, this is a public comment and we have one person who's completed a comment card. So if you'll step aside for a moment, let him come up, and then you can come up and address any concerns he has. Mr. Deanoff?
Thank you very much, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is RNC AC Deanoff, city public advocate. I'm in favor of boosting our downtown and boosting our sales tax revenues in terms of a bar or grill. It's kind of been challenging at this location. There's been a number of businesses that have tried to make it here. I wish all the success to the applicant. There is one thing that's been coming through Missouri and especially our state capital, and that's the regulation of video slot machines, especially at bars and restaurants. If you go to the city of St. Charles and other places around our county, I've seen people at the IGA going to these kids under the age of 12, putting in a $20 bill into these games of chance, slot machines that's allowed to be. And so I would like to see a condition added to this application due to the court case out of the Western Missouri District Court of Appeals that said that they must be regulated by the Missourian Gaming Commission and that it's a crime to have games of chance, slot machines or other type of things that pay out money. And it has to be in a guarded area for only people of 21 age or older. And so I really have a problem with this. A lot of bars and restaurants around our county are going to this because they think that they can get away with it. In Green County and the city of Springfield, they've taken a lot of these slot machines out and have been prosecuting about 37 cases. And it's gone to the Western District Court of Appeals and it hasn't been appealed to the Missouri Supreme Court, which have run out of time for an application to do such. I really think that we need to guard our community from bars and restaurants becoming mini casino. And I'd like to see that condition added to this application. Otherwise, I'd be in favor of this bar and grill, wish the applicant all the success, and hopefully you'll approve that condition of no games of chance to be installed at this facility bar and grill. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
And we have one other person who completed a comment card, Steve Blackley.
Good evening, Board. Mayor Steve Blackley here with for O'Fallon Plaza this evening. Just wanted to speak in support of Marshall opening up a restaurant over there we think could be a good asset to downtown. Seems to be a lot of stuff going to downtown right now currently, which is really good. And I think it's all part of making our downtown a little destination, so just wanted to voice some support for it. Thank you.
All right, and that's the only comment cards we have on that particular item. So we'll close the public hearing at this point and allow the petitioner to come back forward to the podium and then address any concerns that Mr. Deanoff had mentioned.
Oh, yeah, he was talking about the no chance gaming. We are going to have some of those in the facility, but obviously kids are not going to be in our facility like playing games and stuff like that. So I don't, I don't know really what to say about that, but I was having some in the building, so.
Mayor, did you have a comment?
I don't really.
The only thing I can say is we're going to let the state legislature figure it out first before we do anything.
Yeah, if there was something like where it wasn't allowed, I wouldn't, I would not have them, definitely, but.
We'll let them figure it out first.
Okay.
You have to have a license for that, correct?
For the, for the game? I don't believe so.
Oh, you don't have to? Okay. Mr. Howard?
Yes, sir. I'm looking forward to a new restaurant to be developed and everything, too. Just a comment that any new trash enclosures or grease dumpsters will need an enclosure for them.
Yes.
So we'll just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay.
Does anyone else on the Commission have any questions or comments for the petitioner?
Madam Chair, make a motion for approval per staff recommendation, Tennessee.
Second, Seymour.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the property at 300 Sandrin Street, the Dog House Bar and Grill, for sale in service of alcoholic beverages by the drink. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
First item we have this evening under new business is at 2290 Technology Drive. This is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for property at 22 Technology Drive. HV Property Management is the property owner for the proposed use of a hospice facility. Do we have someone here to present this item?
You do. Hello, my name's Eric Kirchner. I'm with Cochrane Engineering. I'm here this evening representing Solis Hospice. Also here this evening, we have Hayden Ginsberg with Cochrane and Colin Tucker with Baumann Architecture. The prior CEP and site plan for this site was approved back in December of 2022. Since then, we've completed full engineering plans for both lots one and lot two. This property sits on lot two. And what we're before you this evening is to request an amendment to the site plan that you guys had previously approved. And the plan that you see before you was revised to increase the size of the building on lot two from the original 9,188 square feet on the approved plan to 11,885 square feet. This increase brought the number of beds in the facility from 11 up to 14. The previous overall site plan that you guys approved had 43 parking stalls. This one has 42, so we lost just one space. And as an overall site between both the lots, there's only 19 spaces required, so we got plenty of parking there. Lot two actually only requires eight parking spaces. We've got 18 parking spaces on that site. And we do have a trash enclosure in the southwest corner of the building, which is where it was originally going to be masonry to match the building. Access for this facility is via cross-access through lot one, out to Technology Drive. And then the updated photo metrics and landscape plan were provided to city staff and then up there meeting city criteria. These are the building elevations with the staff showed you earlier. And then we have reviewed all of the staff comments and don't have any issues with the comments that they have listed as conditions on there. I will speak in regards to the cross-access that was mentioned earlier with the hotel. When we came through the process the first time, there was a request for cross-access to the hotel. We did evaluate that. And the site plan that got approved the first time did not have cross-access to hotel. The reason for that was when the hotel was built, the city had requested, I believe, that hotel developer to have a cross-access easement on the property. A document was out there that was not a recorded document that showed it. However, the cross-access easement was never granted. So we did approach the adjoining property owner, him and his legal team, and they would not grant a cross-access easement. So there was no way to connect and create cross-access. So the plans that were approved last time and the engineering plans that were permitted for construction do not include cross-access to the hotel property. With that open, any questions you might have?
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Seymour?
Thank you.
I have a question on the west side property line. It shows a 10-foot buffer.
It shows a 10-foot what?
Buffer.
So there's buffers showing on the plan, depending upon which side that you butt up to. Let me see if I can.
It looks like it's pretty tight.
Yeah, so you got a, you got a 10-foot landscape buffer over on this side. Then you got a 25-foot landscape buffer over on this side. And there's also a buffer running along this side. So we provided all the appropriate buffers meeting the city code on all three sites.
Well, I'm looking at this on the west side and you got 10.28 feet. So whoever's shooting that, make sure that.
Oh, absolutely.
They got like three or four inches to play with there.
And that happens and when they construct it, it'll be staked accordingly, so it doesn't get over that line, yes.
Right, and if you go over the line, you'll have to talk to David.
Understood.
And David won't be happy. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions or comments for the petitioner regarding this item? If not, do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Recommendation approval based upon staff conditions, Howard.
Second, Charlie Nogger.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 2290 Technology Drive. HV Property Management is the property owner for a hospice facility. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for 2400 Highway 79. The city of O'Fallon is the property owner for a law enforcement training facility. And do we have someone here to present this item?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Commission. I'm Chris Clerks. I'm the Capitol Improvement Manager here for the city of O'Fallon. I also have with me one representative from CMT, our civil site engineer, Eric Winkelman is here in person. And then we also have Todd Aylin, who has called in virtually due to a medical reason. And then I also have representatives, one of each, from each city, which would be city of O'Fallon and city of St. Charles. I have a representative, Captain Josh Hoing, and then also Lieutenant Ryan Van Wave are here with us, too, in case you have any specific questions for them. And both of them are the president, vice president of the Board of Directors of the proposed facility. So I just have a little slideshow here I was going to go through as far as the Center for Advanced Skills Training and Law Enforcement Plan that we were talking about. You all know the location. It's there up off of Highway 79 near Furma Road where you can see the stars locating that there, the yellow stars. This is directly across the road, across Furma Road from where the old O'Fallon Range used to be. That range would have been much smaller and kind of tucked in behind our sewer plant, but that's where they used to shoot out there. It's approximately 72 acres with potential up to 100 acres of use, maybe for some drone training and things like that. This project's been ongoing for the last couple of years. Over the last year and a half, we've been able to get into Phase 1A, which would start the project, and that got our mass grading taken care of. The top-left picture actually is our grading out for the actual range itself. The bottom-middle picture is just our detention basin where we had our borrow pit and used the material out of that to do our mass grading. And then I just show you some pictures of some storm system there. As far as Phase 1B, that's the installation for the firing range itself. It's a 200-yard range. It's got 20 lanes in it. And you can see some pictures that how it developed from grading on the far left through concrete footings and foundations. Top right is a general picture of what it looks like now with the trap installation and the, and the concrete roof over that, that structure. And then just a little picture there so you can see kind of what the, the trap looks like when it's starting to come together. So I just wanted to give you some pictures like that. What we're asking for is the approval on the site plan for the full build-out, which will include the main classroom facility, range pavilion building, sim house, sim shoot house, simulation shoot house, emergency vehicle operations course, and the fleet building for repairs during training. So you guys have all seen the site plan. If you have any questions on it, please feel free to stop me. But you can see that, I'm not sure where that, there it is. So that's the range. This is your 200-yard range. The range pavilion will be right here. This is the main classroom. This is the simulation shoot house. That would be the fleet building. Then this is obviously the EVOC track, and we have a couple of obstacle course areas here, SWAT training here. And then the rest of this is associated to the EVOC track, which is about a mile long in total. Here's some renderings that we have from our architect. I think you guys have seen those in the packet. It's roughly 28,000 square foot, up to seven classrooms of space that can be divided properly to reduce size if we need to, depending on the training that needs to happen. The office space, there's office space for regular staff needs and then also potential space that would be built into it for if Eastern Missouri Police Academy would ever enter an agreement to be out there to train their cadets. We have canine housing for up to eight, eight dogs. And then we would have some future spaces, an open gym, kind of for close combat training, and then also a future space for a potential simulator if they decide to move forward with doing that. This is a rendering of the range pavilion building, which would be utilized as kind of a really small classroom for the range. Like I said, there's 20 lanes, so in theory you could have, you know, 20, 30, 40 people getting trained inside the pavilion. You could have 20 out there shooting, so you can stagger the time on the actual range itself to get qualified. This is rendering we have of the simulation shoot house. It's a 10,000-square-foot building. It does have the catwalk for the instructors to be up top for training and observation. That middle square that you see down below is a wall system that's changeable for their needs. They can set it up however they would need to, take it down, move it around, whatever they would need to. But it's basically, you know, a kind of a cut to fit whatever they would need whenever they need to do their certain types of training. It does have a dedicated space for the simunition rounds in that building. There will be no live rounds held at this building. Those will be stored up near the range to keep those completely separate because obviously we don't want to have any accidents that way, so. And there are various training scenarios that use various stairwells that are consistent with what you would see throughout the city in, in many different buildings that are multi-level, whether it be a larger school, MasterCard, or some of the other buildings we have through, through the city. This is just kind of a high-level rendering of what the outside's looking like for that building. And like I talked about, it's a one-mile EVOC track. It's got kind of a rolling train with some various curve situations. We do have a four-way intersection area with signal control planned for it. Brake cooling stations are necessary on these because they go through brakes and tires pretty quick when they, when they're training. From my understanding, I've never been able to do it. Skid pad training is all part of that. And then there is a shared observation tower, which I forgot to point out. But the observation tower is, has got a full 360 view basically of the, of the site, so it can over-watch on the range or the trap or, or the range or the EVOC course, obstacle courses, SWAT training. It can see pretty much everything it would need to. This is the fleet maintenance building here, just kind of an inside rendering of how many cars we can potentially get in there. That thing on the right side, top right, is actually our, a command vehicle for command situations, so we'd be able to house that. I think currently it's, it's housed in a temporary place, I think water and sewers, housing it. I think currently, it's housed in a temporary place, I think water and sewers, housing it for them right now, so we can get this back underneath roof at a police facility. And again, this is just kind of a rendering of that fleet building there. And like I was talking about earlier, some of the other amenities, we do have the canine training and human obstacle course areas. We have SWAT training area, Breachers Alley training area, then the retention pond, detention pond could be used for possible water rescue training, and then drone training, you know, throughout the site as needed, so... That's the questions I have for now. There's one thing I wanted to touch on back on just the main traffic study that has been brought up. The traffic study is underway. You have the version that went to MoDOT when we sent it to them to get them just to understand what we're trying to do, and we've already had a meeting with MoDOT to discuss this. They requested some additional information, so we've been able to do a trip generation study that we're going to be sending to them tomorrow, if we haven't already today, and we'll be continuing those conversations with MoDOT, because if you've been on 79, you know that at peak times of the day, there's a lot of traffic. We understand that. We know that, you know, any development in the future along 79 is going to be problematic for 79 at those peak times, so we're working through everything we can do to mitigate those potential issues that may be caused from our site, and understand what our site would need to do or would be required by MoDOT for us to do for any improvements to make sure that, you know, we can get in and out of our site safely and properly, yet not impact Highway 79 to any detriment. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that there is more work to be done on that. We understand that, but you guys got kind of the early version, and there's other pieces to that puzzle that will be falling into place hopefully soon. So, with that, are there any questions for me directly?
Yes, Commissioner Nogger.
Good afternoon. So, I know you're going to have two entrances, Furma and 79. Is that, is the perimeter going to be fenced in at all, or...
Let me get to that one. Oops. It's going the wrong way. So, I didn't catch the very end of your question. I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, is the rest of the perimeter going to have any fencing around it, or is it just...
Yes, yeah. The site will be fully fenced when we get done with the full build-out. There will be the main access point, our main intended access point is the main entrance right here, as you can see. This would be down here off of Furma would be considered more of a secondary entrance that public wouldn't be just accessible to. That would be controlled by the Board of Directors and the staff of the facility to, if, you know, deliveries or trash pickup or something like that needs to come through, we'd be able to get that scheduled and coordinated, but that wouldn't be a full public access down off of Furma. That's more of a secondary for the facility itself, and the trainees and cadets or whoever would be using it that would need to come up through there to try to get to, you know, some of this other stuff of the site. So, hopefully that answers your question.
Mayor.
Chris, where's the tower going?
Ah, since I have this, right there. That's the tower. Yep.
There was a question. Oh, Commissioner Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, how you doing?
Good. How are you, sir?
Doing good.
Good.
A question. This facility is going to be available for our law enforcement. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
When I say law enforcement, I mean our regular-duty officers plus cadets that are training. It's going to be a facility used by our department plus St. Charles.
That is correct.
Are there any other departments?
So, as of right now, this is a coordinated effort between the two cities of O'Fallon and the City of St. Charles, and those are the two main players in this facility right now. I'm not privy to all the conversations, but I do know that it has been, you know, they've reached out to other agencies to see if there's interest for use, and I believe we've already had people calling us about interest in use on this facility too. So, there's a lot of things in the works with that that still need to be ironed out, but the two main players are O'Fallon and the City of St. Charles.
I think it's outstanding. I know that we constantly train our SWAT teams. I mean, you don't have four guys that are on a SWAT team, and they're on the same team for 20 years. I mean, and we have new people we're training, bringing up the speed. All this facility looks fantastic. I think we're really lucky to have this in the City of O'Fallon.
I would agree. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mayor.
Could I get these two guys to come up and answer?
Two officers, yes.
Which question?
I will gladly step aside.
I know there's...
I know there's a lot more than just the City of St. Charles and the City of O'Fallon using this, so either one of you.
So, thank you, everyone, for having us. So, not only will we be with the City of St. Charles, but the City of O'Fallon, be utilizing for ourselves, we are also going to be opening it up as a regional facility. There is not a facility...
Excuse me, sir.
Yes?
Just so everybody knows, can you give us, introduce yourselves?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Josh Hoing. I'm a captain with St. Charles City.
Okay.
Lieutenant Ryan Van Wave with O'Fallon.
All right, thank you.
So, the idea behind this is there is not really a facility like this anywhere in the area, let alone the state. The nearest one that has any type of these capabilities is Kansas City. So, the idea behind that was that both cities came together and tried to develop more or less a one-stop shop for everybody within the entire region, not only in the state of Missouri, but hopefully other states. We have already had interest from states such as Iowa wanting to come down to utilize it once it gets up and running. So, the idea behind is to make it to where it's accessible for everyone in the region to get the applicable training that they need, obviously to keep every community they serve safe.
And the question I have is, you know, you've got to have so many hours of shooting, you have so many hours of driving, so many hours of class time, so basically, those guys can come in here for a week and get all their training done for a year.
Correct.
And just the economic impact for St. Charles County will be immense, because, you know, where they're staying, their food, their gas, you know, they go shopping in O'Fallon or anywhere in St. Charles County.
Correct.
Members of the commission...
Madam Chair, I have a question. Security as far as, is this open 24 hours? Is there security at the front? Is there a gate at the front to make sure people aren't driving in off 79?
The plan is there will be a gate on the front as well as a gate on the secondary entrance on Furma Road. It will not be necessarily staffed 24/7 because it won't be open 24/7. Mainly normal business hours, but it will be open in the evening as well because we want to be able to have the officers be able to train such as night fire and night driving. The other thing I want to point out too is it's not even going to necessarily only be used for law enforcement. We're going to be able to have fire and EMS to be able to use the EVOC track. It's going to be graded and set up to where it'll withstand those vehicles, so they can also work on their driving as well, because we know when they're running emergency on the streets, just like we do, they need that training also.
And I believe the live-fire range too will be in compliance with the seat ordinances of operation, so it will be 24/7.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to see this, to help support you guys that put your life on the line for us all the time, so thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions or comments for any of the gentlemen, or yes, Commissioner Howard?
I'm concerned about the missing information with the traffic study. What I'd like to do is make a recommendation to approve this, but with a condition that once the traffic study's done, a revised site plan comes back to address those issues so that we can move forward with it.
Chris, do you want to address that?
Yeah, if that's a requirement that it takes, then we can bring back any information regarding the traffic study once it's complete, because then we'll be able to talk through the improvements that would either be necessary and/or required for us to do along 79, so...
I mean, there doesn't, you know, it's not the kind of a development that's going to have a huge traffic generation issue, but there's already big traffic problems out here, and the study will address any, you know, need a turn lane or something, whatever it is.
Yeah, so...
We don't have a revised site plan to show that.
Yeah, just to speak to what you're talking about with trip generations and that document that I referred to, which you don't have in front of you. It's not in the packet. It came a couple of weeks ago, honestly, or not even, I think. The trip generation, we looked at it as, in a couple of different ways, the first version, we wanted to get modified, so that's kind of an obsolete version. This last version that we've come up with that we'll be submitting to MoDOT to see if they agree with it is more of like the classrooms, you know, I said there's like up to seven classrooms you could have, so obviously, you can't have every classroom starting at the exact same time, because you can't just shuffle that many people in and out of there that quickly. So, we're looking at staggered class times, especially for the classroom, but then even like staggered class times possibly for like half-day range use and things like that. So, we've looked at a lot of different scenarios with this to try to help mitigate and reduce any traffic flow or impacts to the traffic on 79 as best we can, and we're still working on that to refine it.
Has there been any thought to providing signage, kind of warning people, this is a firing range, there's someone driving down Highway 79, and if somebody starts firing on the range, in today's scary environment, people react to gunfire and stuff different than they did 20 years ago, and it gives them a heads-up, you may hear firing.
Yeah, I'm not aware of us having any conversations to this point, but, you know, we can see what planning and zoning may have, if there's any requirements to something like that or not. We do plan on having kind of a main monument, entrance monument, that'll have the facility name on it and things like that, but I see where you're coming from, so, yeah.
I mean, I live down south on Highway K, and I can hear the firing range down in Bush Wildlife area. It's not, it's not a disturbing factor, but it's, you hear it every once in a while. Depending upon the atmospheric conditions, so...
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor.
I didn't see the drones. Is there, you got drones? Is there a place for the drones?
I didn't have any picture of the drones, but...
No, just go back, just tell me where...
Let me back up just a little bit more. So, when I was talking about that, the drone training is planned to be kind of like right through this area, you know, with the detention basin that we've got, there's a heavily wooded area through there that's actually a wetland, so we've got to be careful getting in and out of there. Obviously, we can't disturb that, but, you know, the whole site could generally be used as a drone training at some capacity. These guys would probably be better to speak to that than me, but that's generally where we're thinking of.
No, that's fine, because I know there was going to be drone training in there.
I don't think there's necessarily a designated spot in the facility, because the operators can pretty much be wherever they need to be to have, but the idea is basically kind of like where the tower's going to be will be where the idea of where the pilots will be with the drones.
Well, and I like the wooded area, because you can, you know, because they're going to have to, you know, the heat sensors and everything else on the drones and where they can pick them up and everything else, so... Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Members of the commission, if there are no further comments or questions regarding this item, do we have a motion regarding the site plan?
Madam Chair, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions with the addition of a condition that when the final traffic study is completed, that it in revisions will be submitted for approval.
Second, Bowles.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan with the additional requirement as stated by Commissioner Howard regarding the traffic study. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for 1621 Kimar Court, INC Environmental Recycling LLC is the property owner for a building addition. Do we have someone to present this item?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. I'm Mike Hackmeister with Cochrane Engineering, here on behalf of Environmental Recycling Inc. Talk about their expansion project. The building footprint of the expansion is about 23,600 square feet. We have loading and unloading zones along the west side and the southeast corner there. We have a new detention basin at the south end of the site, a revised basin along the east, and that also has an extended foundation wall for grade separation, and the new building is going to use the same colors and materials as the existing building, and that's all it has, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Members of the commission, anyone have any questions or comments for the petitioner on this item? All right, if we don't have any questions or comments, do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Madam Chair, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions, Howard.
Second, Charlie Nogger.
All right, we have a motion and a second regarding to approve the site plan for 1621 Kimar Court, INC Environmental Recycling LLC is the property owner for a building addition. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed. I see the mayor stepped out, so...
All right, motion carries. All right, the next item we have on the agenda this evening is a public comment for a conditional use permit for 615 West Bridge Drive. This is a request for consideration and motion recommendation to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for 615 West Bridge Drive for a convenience store without fuel sales. And do we have someone here to present this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah?
My name is Rob, excuse me, sitting too long. My name is Rob Lutfi. I'm the attorney for the applicant. The proposal, well, first of all, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time this evening. The proposal is for a convenience store at the site, a convenience store to provide everyday essential grocery items, convenience items, including hot food, snacks, beverages, groceries, things of that nature.
All right. Members of the commission, any comments or questions for the petitioner regarding this All right. This is a public comment, and we have two people that would like to speak regarding this item on the agenda. First, Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, members of the commission. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deanoff, City Public Advocate. I'm in favor of this proposition or this application. I think it'll generate sales taxes. It's something that is needed in this neighborhood. However, I'd like to see three different conditions added to this application or this CUP, conditional use permit. The first condition is that no kratom sales take place. Kratom is a very bad drug that has a lot of bad chemicals in it, is unfavorable, can get got easily by children under the age of 18. It's a regulatory nightmare in Jefferson City, our state capital, and so that would be my first recommendation is a condition for no sales of kratom or other type of substance at this gas station, convenience store. The second item I'd like to have a condition on is that there be no hemp products be sold at this establishment. Again, there's a lot of bad hemp out there, bad combinations that hurt people and have an adverse effect on both adults and children to get a hold of it. And the third issue is that no gaming terminals, no games-a-chance, slot machines, or other entertainment-type video machines produced by the biggest producer in Missouri is a company out of Wildwood in terms of, they lost a court case that was a decision by the Western District Court of Appeals that said that these machines are illegal, and they must be, have a license, they must be regulated under the Missouri Gaming Commission, promulgated rules, regulations, and policies, and I would like to see that condition, that no gaming terminals at the site be allowed unless they're approved and regulated with a permit by the Missouri Gaming Commission, which is enforced by the Missouri Highway Patrol. Those are my comments, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you very much.
We also have another person that completed a comment card, Steve Blackley.
Steve Blackley with O'Fallon Plaza. Good evening again. Just wanted to speak out in favor of this project. I think a convenience store north of 70, west of Main Street over in that area would provide a much-needed service for the folks that live over there. There's nothing like it in that part of town. And hopefully, we'll get a grocery store in the north end of town sometime, too. But anyway, hope you approve this project. Thank you.
All right, that's the last of the comments. So with that, we will close the public comment portion of this item and allow the petitioner to come forward and address any concerns that were spoken before.
Certainly, thank you. So of course, my client will, you know, comply with any of the state laws in place at the time and with any standards of the City of Fallon and any special restrictions placed by this board and by, you know, by the city. So any concerns with that regard, such as like that we talked, commenting about the gambling machines earlier, you know, that's in the hands of the legislature. There's certainly a bountiful litigation pending about that. It'll be sorted out. And as far as the other products, the kratom and the hemp, I regrettably am not, you know, admittedly not familiar with them, but my client will comply with all the city, state, and laws and federal laws, of course.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm not familiar with the planning and zoning having anything to do with any products on any shelves. We're here for planning and zoning. Okay, and city attorney can correct me if I'm incorrect, but I don't believe that we can regulate what they put on their shelves. I think there's already laws existing.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
I'm Chair, thank you. This mall, the strip mall that we're here is primarily a daytime business, insurance companies, contractors and stuff in the building. And now we're going to go to a 24-hour business. But there's not any real parking lot lighting. And that has a concern for both safety and participants in the store and everything else. And the other thing was that currently there's a small dumpster that sits on the south corner of the building. But stores like this have a tendency to have a lot more trash. And if you're going to need a larger or another dumpster, we'll need an enclosure for it.
Certainly.
Or if you would address both of those issues, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, yeah, my client absolutely will make sure that there's adequate trash disposal space and it will be enclosed per, you know, city regulations. And the first comment was about the parking, the lighting in the parking lot. We know that's been a concern. That's something certainly that my client wants to address, that my client is interested in anyone is operating a safe location for, you know, for the public to patronize. So yeah, lighting is something that will be added on to, to the property.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Where's your deliveries going to come in? Going to come in out of the front door?
Could I get my client up here? Who's the operator? Let me ask him.
I just want to make sure where, you know, is it just going to be, it's not going to be a tractor trailer trying to pull in here. It's going to be maybe a box truck or something, or the sodas or whatever. I'm just worried about the timing of when your deliveries will be coming in and basically the, and I don't, I really can't see an 18-wheeler pulling into this parking lot and trying to deliver your goods.
Yeah, so it's going to be.
Who gives you name and address, please?
Hi, sir. This is, my name is Anil, and I live in O'Fallon. So it's going to be boxed delivery, sir. Most of the deliveries are going to be on Fridays, and it's going to be getting through the front door of the building.
You know about, do you have any idea what time, I mean, with St. Dominic there and traffic and everything else?
Yeah.
Hopefully, you just kind of set those times where it's not.
Not too crowded. I get you.
It's not too crowded.
Yes, sir. So the deliveries are usually going to start from any time after 11:00, and it goes till 3:00, 3:00 p.m. in the afternoon.
So you're going to be delivering through the front door?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure and just kind of get the timing down where it's not involving a whole bunch of traffic during peak time.
Yes, sir. I completely get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are very fair questions. And I don't, and I don't think we're, have a situation, we're talking about 18-wheelers.
I didn't think so with the small of a store, but I just, I mean, with the beer and the Pepsi trucks and the Coke trucks, they're pretty, you know.
They're sizable.
They're sizable. So I just, that's what I'm trying to figure out, especially with Mr. Howard saying, you got other businesses in there. So we're going to have to, you know, kind of time them out where it's not really, I don't want them making their neighbors upset.
Sure.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
So did I hear you say that you were okay with a condition or to, that we add a condition to, that you're going to put in more lighting for the facility?
Yes, we are going to improve the lighting for sure. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mayor?
I don't have a problem with that, but do you own the whole building? Do you own the whole strip center?
They're under contract to purchase it.
The whole strip center?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Then, then yes.
Yes.
I was going to say, if you're just renting that one space, I don't know how we can make you put lighting in there where you don't own the whole strip center.
No, that's correct. They're under contract to buy the whole center.
Then I'm all right with the condition.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Howard?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I had two concerns, and they've kind of been addressed, but have you looked at the entrances to accept deliveries? Because if you have any type of deliveries, a Coke truck's going to be 52-foot, your food's going to be a 26-footer, and then you're looking at, same thing with your beer deliveries. And I know that intersection is a heavy traffic, both with that subdivision coming out of there, as well as people trying to get out. And my concern is the delivery time, and then to your entrances into your strip mall to make sure that they're adequate, because it'll be tough for them to turn into the first one. And the second one doesn't look big enough for most to make that turn back in to deliver you to park inside your parking lot. So I'd just like to see you make sure as you move forward, you look at that.
Yes.
And really value your delivery time to make sure the neighbors that you're trying to get the business from don't get upset because they can't get in and out of their subdivision.
There has been some consideration already to that concern, to expanding the curb cut perhaps, or, you know, whatever needs to be done to accommodate the traffic.
Thank you. I just, I travel that road, and I know that intersection is not very fun to get out in. And my fear is with the mayor that if you're doing a delivery and you've got that Budweiser truck, or Miller truck, or Coors, I think I hit them all, or microbreweries, that, that you're not impeding that traffic back further into that subdivision. And we're trying to make sure we keep an honest flow and keep your business up and, you know, happy with your neighbors, because it will be a good asset to that neighborhood.
Yeah, absolutely. And the last thing any business wants to do is be a nuisance to the neighborhood.
So we have a, close the public comment on this, so if there's any other questions or comments, or do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
I'm Chair, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions with the additional condition that lighting be provided for the parking lot and that enclosure for the dumpster be provided if it's replaced or enlarged.
Second, Wexler.
All right, we have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the city council regarding the conditional use permit for 615 Westridge Drive for the, to allow a convenience store without fuel cells. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
Motion carries. And this will be at next Thursday's city council meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have on the agenda this evening is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for 3605 Highway K, Selective Solutions as the applicant for a wireless telecommunication facility monopole. Do we have someone here to present this item?
Good evening. My name is Susan Story. I work for Selective Solutions. We were hired by Ameren to work through the beginning process of putting up their tower. We have a CUP, we have a site plan approval. Ameren got out there in January and discovered that after the trees had been cut down to make room for the tower, that the elevations that were provided to us by the surveyor were off by a good six feet. So where they had planned to put it had, they needed to move it essentially. They needed a flatter spot. So there is a flat spot 20 feet, excuse me, 25 feet directly south. It still keeps us within the required setbacks on the property. And that would be essentially the only change. We'll move it 25 feet down, and the driveway will go directly to it instead of kind of hooking up into it.
All right, Mayor?
Is the survey paying for this redrawing?
No.
Just curious.
Yeah, he said when he went out there, it was tough. It's a very heavily wooded property and, 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 yeah. We didn't think it was that tough, though.
Did you ask?
Ameren has not asked me to ask him that, but.
All right, members of the commission, anyone have any other questions or comments regarding this item on the agenda? Oh, Commissioner Howard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only issue I have is that the equipment and bridges should be below the top of this enclosure.
Yes.
Okay, they're shown above on the site plan. That's.
Everything is the same as it got approved last time as far as that site plan goes, other than being 25 feet below. So the fence itself, I believe, I can't remember if it's six or eight feet. The cabinets are not that tall.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions. Howard?
Second, Charlie Nogger.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 3605 Highway K, Selective Solutions is the applicant for a wireless telecommunication facility in monopole. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item we have on the agenda this evening is a public comment for a conditional use permit for 609 South Main Street. This is a request for consideration and motion for a recommendation to the city council regarding a conditional use permit for 609 South Main Street for a, to allow a restaurant with a drive-through, and a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for 609 South Main Street for a restaurant with a drive-through. Do we have someone here to present this item?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Bickings. I'm a project manager at a local architecture and engineering firm. I'm here to represent my client, Joe Downs, with Hawthorne Investors, as well as Nick Ol, Starbucks Store Development Manager. Starbucks is proposing to redevelop a vacant quick-service restaurant at 609 South Main Street. Starbucks is considered an assembly occupancy group, which is the same occupancy as the previous tenant servicing that space. We are proposing minor facade modifications to the exterior, which were shown in our packet, which we can go over here if you all would like to. The changes are limited to new paint, composite siding representing the colored elevations. And the existing site is being reworked to provide a more extensive stacking for the drive-through while still maintaining the circulation throughout the site. More than happy to go into some of the modifications that we're making on the site plan. Unfortunately, I don't have anything up here to present to the listeners, but happy to take any questions.
If approved, what kind of timeframe you looking at?
Soon as possible.
How many cars usually in a Starbucks drive-through lane at peak hour?
Well, we are showing 16 in our drive-through.
I know you say, I know you're showing 16. Is that?
That's, that's, that'd be abnormal to see 16 in the drive-through lane.
So during a peak time, is it nine?
Nine to, nine to 12 is probably a good average. They definitely tried to push through the cars through quicker as soon as the line stacks up a little bit.
I understand that. I was just curious, because I know, because we're your exit, you know, your exit out onto West Terra.
Right.
There's, I know a couple councilmen have a concern with it. And I know some of the commissioners have a concern with it. So I'm just thinking, you know, at a peak time, if you have nine or 10, is that, I don't believe that's going to block that, that exit.
No, it would not.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. My main concern is Main Street going north, people trying to turn left into there. And if it's.
They do it now. I mean.
I know, but it's not a Starbucks there now. So there's, not now, it's closed. But, but even when the Burger, I think that, you know, there's going to be certain times, particularly in the morning, when people may be trying to turn left, and you got a lot of people going southbound. I just, I'm concerned about that.
Well, I'm going to disagree with you, because I, I think what they're trying to get is people coming from the north. To me, if you're heading south, I really don't think, because there's, there's two other Starbucks down on the south end of town. There's one down by you, and there's one at K and Fizey.
Right.
So to me, I don't think, my thought is they're going, they're getting, they're trying to get the folks heading south. I don't think they're getting, trying to get the people from the south end coming north. Now, I'm not saying there will be a few, but I don't think, you know, we had, we had the Taco Bell and everything, or the Burger King and everything else there. So is it an issue? Yeah, it's an issue turning left into there. But, you know, I think most of the O'Fallon residents, if there's traffic and people got a left turn signal on, they're, and they're going to let the folks in.
Well, I just, you know, if you, I'm assuming they'll have a sign on Highway 70 to let people know that there's one right there. And I, you know.
That's, do they, do they have a sign?
You know, I'm just saying, that's part of the, I would think would be a draw to have a Starbucks there, is you're right on the interstate. And if you get off going either way, you have to go north to get in there. So, so I don't know how much of that's going to be a.
I don't see people getting off the interstate to get coffee.
Oh, my God.
They've already got coffee.
That's all, you, you, you don't, I do that all the time. Get off the interstate to get coffee, for God's sake. Yeah.
Jason.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just out of curiosity, you moved the drive-through lane all the way to the outside. And the mayor addressed my concern, and it looks like, I thought maybe you were putting a barrier there to get onto New West Terra Lane, but you're not. It looks like you're just striping it. I just, I love the fact that you've got two outs to eliminate some of that traffic in the south. My concern is, is the way you have the traffic flow now, you're kind of taking away that exit out with not, I mean, if you're in the drive-through line, you don't know if somebody just pulled in and they're trying to snooker their way up amongst the five cars behind you. So I just didn't know, when you look at that, if you're able to shift that in so where you do have an exit lane there. I don't know that spacing there. Does that make sense?
Are you talking, are you talking on West Terra?
Yeah. If you go past the employee parking lot on that corner.
I think the intent for having that be the one way is that if you provide that other option, you're going to get people that want to cut through the site, and then they're going to try to run into the drive-through lane. So that's why we tried to limit it down and put the primary, our park, our employee parking over there to where they're coming in. Our five to six members that are on staff will park in that area and kind of utilize those spaces. And then when they leave, they'll exit out onto that area on that road.
Right. I, I just know that getting out onto Main Street from there, if I was to head southbound, is not the best. And if I got off the interstate and I wanted to jump back on it, it's much easier to use New West Terra than it would be to go back to Main, depending on the time of day. And I would just, and I don't know if it's signage that would say exit only from there.
Right.
Because I get what you're saying. If somebody pulled in there, they're going to try and cut in front of the other nine cars that are in that drive-through. That, I mean, that's the only concern that I had, because I love everything about it. It'll be a beautiful entrance at downtown Maine. But I just wanted to see maybe the experience of going to this Starbucks to be solid on your way out versus the traffic. your way out versus the traffic flow getting on the Main Street being a concern.
Gotcha.
All right. Any other questions or comments or, well, if not, this, this is a public comment, so we have one person who's completed a comment card, so if you'll step aside.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Commission. I have to go on the record as adamantly opposed to this CUP, Conditional Use Permit, and their application. First of all, this neighborhood is a cluster in terms of traffic. It takes someone during rush hour periods, either AM or PM, to go from Missouri Highway P to Interstate 70 anywhere in the neighborhood of over 20 minutes, sometimes to 30 minutes. Currently, they have three lanes of stacking. I would encourage any of the Commissioners to visit their Fizey location at Missouri Highway K. They have traffic issues at that location. I've seen stacking in excess of 25 vehicles, and it backs up into the roadway where the Fire Protection District Headquarters office is on that loop roadway. It's caused major traffic concerns, and as a matter of fact, traffic concerns on to Fizey Road. And so there's a lot of congestion, as you all know. There are major backups. We have two intersections there, and we have signs, which the Police Department does not enforce whatsoever. Those signs say, "Do not block the intersection." But of course, those intersections are blocked, and people trying to make a left-hand turn are stuck in the traffic lane for over 10 minutes or longer. So in my opinion, for this facility, there needs to be a traffic study that's needed. I don't know why staff in their infinite wisdom did not request that, but I don't see anywhere in the staff report a traffic study. The intersections cannot be blocked. As I said, this is areas a total cluster in terms of traffic. There's been no traffic mitigation, and it backs up to I-70 and causes a lot of problems. To rectify this, I would ask that there be a right-in and a right-out, and no left turns made in this facility so close to I-70. How many coffee stations or how many coffee facilities do we need in downtown O'Fallon? Within five blocks or at least three current coffee facility, or this would be the third or fourth coffee facility in a five-block area. And so somebody's not going to survive, and our economic development is going to end up in an empty building, lack of sales taxes, and I am adamantly opposed to the Starbucks at this most vital, important section of our vital line of O'Fallon at South Main Street and Interstate 70. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
All right. We will close the public comment and ask the petitioner to come forward and address the concerns of the resident.
Yeah, so the concerns with the number of people in the lane, I did confirm that what we're showing is 16. That would be very abnormal to see that number in the drive-through. I think the configuration of the site is primarily focused to have people enter and exit in the most optimal way possible. In addition, we are proposing to renovate a vacant building on, in the site and produce tax revenue for the city for that already existing vacant building.
Mayor, or City Council, or...
It's Mr. Howard.
Mr. Howard, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the concerns I have is that the existing entrance that is on the northeast corner is going to be converted to exit-only is too wide. And we have a certain percentage of the population of the city that those signs don't mean anything to them, and they turn anyway. And this entrance needs to be modified to make it a single exit lane and to make it a little more difficult to get in there. So, I mean, that's one of the things that I would like to see made on it. The other is that the, I don't know how traffic is going to get to the five parking spots when you've got 10 cars stacked up through there to get to the West Terra exit.
Right, right.
I don't know. Maybe the plan is that people will be there before they're open and they can get in, and then they'll exit out to West Terra and won't have to come back through.
Yes, sir.
But that's kind of an interesting situation there. There is an issue with the number of parking spots required. You're wanting to provide some, quite a few less than what is required by our traffic section, and I'm concerned about that. I know that Starbucks is not a BIC, Eat Inside type of place, my understanding. It's primarily a drive-through, so that may not, your study that you provided may be warranted that, you know, fewer parking spaces are required with your business model. But I definitely think that the entrance needs to be changed to make it truly an exit-only.
Understood. The reason, we initially had planned to narrow that entrance, but the idea of trying to keep as much of the existing site and the existing drainage on-site to be as-is conditions is, was our design intent, but if that's something that the Commissioners would like to see, we can incorporate that into the plan set. And then with regards to your comment, we do have those five employee parkings. Ideally, they are getting there before the drive-through gets stacked up. And if not, they might just have to wait five or 10 minutes to get to their spot over there. And then to also address your concern with regards to the parking, we provided a packet for surrounding regional Starbucks locations for the average parking count as right around 19.6 for this region for what you would see at our peak times, and we are providing 23 spaces, which we know is less than what you guys would see, but we do feel that it would be adequate enough based on our information.
Also, the facility directly to the north, Taco Bell.
Yep.
They have, their drive-through parking lines up out into the street and almost back to Main Street. So, I mean, that's good for them, but it's bad for traffic on that street. Just, it's a mess sometimes.
Thank you. I met with everybody. This is part of my ward, and I'm excited about you guys coming in. When you look at the development of Starbucks over on Bryan Road and what a mess it is with traffic, I think this is going to be much easier flow going in and out than Bryan Road, and people trying to cross three lanes of traffic to get in there, and then you've got the gas station and everything else. So I'm excited. I'm glad you guys are coming in. It's going to be nice to see that corner actually having life again.
Yep.
So, and I think you guys have thought it out. I mean, you've got a nice, long drive-through, so any stacking should not get out onto the street. It should be fine. So I'm excited for it personally. And I think, you know, the employees, if they really, they can always come in off of West Terra and get into their little parking spots.
Very true.
That is accessible for them to go in that way and to get into their parking spots.
Very true. The design intends to prevent, you know, patriots from trying to travel throughout and cut through, because we know now that that is currently being used as a cut-through.
Right, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Seymour, say more.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One of them is, what's your indoor dining, excuse me, how many people are you looking to be able to?
Right now, the interior of the space has about 20 to 25 seatings, 25 seats, so, and that would be extremely abnormal to see all 25 of those seats filled up. So you may see on average, you know, five to 12 people at our, at the peak times actually sitting with inside the Starbucks.
And what about your menu? Are you pretty much selling the same food product as the other Starbucks?
Yes, sir.
I've lived here almost 30 years, and Main Street has always, always been a traffic issue. They've redone the interstate, the overpass, underpass. They've added Texas U-turn lanes. I mean, the state's done what the state can do, but that, right where you guys are going, I think it's a real high visibility. It's a good location. I think you'll do well there, but just get ready, the traffic's going to be the traffic. And like someone said earlier, you've got people that just don't pay attention to the law.
Yeah. We'll put the signs up, but as you mentioned, hopefully, you know, hopefully they follow, but...
Good luck.
Thank you.
You do, just so you know, you know, you've got Phase II Main Street coming through there from Pittman down to West Terra to 70. So that's going to be happening, Wade, when? Approximately?
Probably at the same time, and we've been in communication with them. They've shown different things like the sidewalk by others, so...
I just want to make sure that you guys are aware that there'll be some construction. I mean, it's going to be not lacered pavement and sidewalks and everything else, so as long as you guys are aware that, you know, you guys opening the construction of Main Street.
Right.
It's going to be a little bit more of a mess until we get it all done.
Great. So when is that timeframe? Because he didn't commit to anything.
As soon as possible.
He just said as soon as possible.
For typical Starbucks.
Yes, I apologize. And actually, I was thinking about one of the other sites that are up that we've been coordinating with. So the project's been bid out, been approved, so contractors should start here in the spring.
Okay. You know, I do, I will disagree with the mayor. I do think there is going to be a problem of people trying to turn left in there. It's going to be a major issue, and...
We'll agree to disagree.
I will, we'll agree to disagree, because I can just tell you, I come in early, and I, I'd like to get my coffee right before I get to the office, and I come up north all the way from K. I don't stop at the closest Starbucks. I stop at the closest one to my office. And so I would have to turn left to get in there, which, you know, usually it's pretty early anyway. But I do think there's going to be an issue here. Yeah, I could. But, and I do think there's going to be an issue with people getting off the interstate because they're going to be, you know, people who are traveling the interstate and want to stop for a cup of coffee, and that's, I mean, it makes sense that you guys would be there. That's a great place for a Starbucks to capture the people on the interstate. And we're going to have an issue with people getting off, and then, as it is, it's bad right now, that design to turn, coming north, people do not see you, and they, I have people pull in front of me all the time, right there, coming off that ramp to get onto North Main. And especially if they're in a hurry to get their coffee, they're going to be paying less attention. So I expect that that will happen. And I have seen what Commissioner Howard has seen at the Starbucks at K and Fizey, where it's right-in, right-out only. I saw somebody turn left from K into the right-in. It was amazing to me they were able to do that, but they did it. So, so I can, I'm just going to say, there's going to be a problem going northbound, people trying to turn left into there. And hopefully they'll use some common sense, but I don't know about that. Huh? Commissioner Boust?
Ryan, right?
Yes, sir.
I think you've been to this property, this site. How often is it that Starbucks will take over this type of footprint to open up a Starbucks?
I can't speak too much on that. I have worked with Starbucks for the past couple of years, and this is a little bit larger of a footprint than what a Starbucks would typically see, but the location is a great location, and it's not, it's not abnormal. We're working on some facilities now that are expanded layouts that are 2,500 square feet. I believe this one's 2,800, so it's not out of the norm of a typical layout.
So I think you've been to the site, you've seen it, you've dealt with the traffic of the cut-through, and you see that it's an awesome entrance. So I think you factored that into the decision to bring the Starbucks. So I'm excited to see it. I think it's going to be a great vision, the way your footprint looks and the modifications you're doing to the building. I think Starbucks following will navigate traffic very well to get in and support your business.
Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner Boust, I'm going to disagree with you. I don't care. I think that it's going to be bad with people trying to turn left into there, especially if they're coming off the interstate and there's a lot of traffic coming south in the morning. So, but, so do we have any other questions or comments regarding this item on the agenda? If not, do we have a motion regarding?
Motion...
We have first a conditional use permit to vote on. Do we have a motion regarding that item?
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions, Howard.
Second, Cook.
All right, we have a motion and a second for a recommendation to the City Council regarding a conditional use permit for 609 South Main Street to allow a restaurant with a drive-through. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
We all, sir, we still have the site plan to vote on.
Let's talk about it.
Okay. So we've discussed the site plan. Do we have a motion regarding the site plan?
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation of approval based on staff conditions with the additional condition that the northeast exit be modified as a exit-only.
Second, Wexler.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 609 South Main Street for a restaurant with a drive-through with the additional condition that the exit on West Terra be modified to an exit-only.
No, not West Terra.
No, the northeast entrance.
The northeast entrance. Okay. Members of the Commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries.
See you next Thursday.
What was that?
See you next Thursday.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda this evening is a public comment for a conditional use permit for 418 South Main Street. This is a request for consideration and motion for recommendation to the City Council regarding a conditional use permit for 418 South Main Street for QuickTrip Corporation for a convenience store with fuel cells. And this is also for the site plan for 418 South Main Street for the convenience store with fuel cells. Do we have someone here to present this item?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, City Staff. We're Item 7, so I don't have a presentation. I figure with the long history that we have, QuickTrip and O'Fallon, you're very familiar with what we do and how we do it. We're one of the best, and we honor our long relationship with O'Fallon by tonight being here to establish a new location along the corridor we've been talking about, which is Main Street. If there is any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We do have some comments to make when it comes to the site plan portion of it. I don't know if you want to separate CUP and site plan.
Let me generally discuss them both.
Okay, sure. Not only am I here, but I have also brought Lee Cannon with CBB, our traffic engineer, and then I also have Nathan Cowan here with CDI, our civil engineer. So if there's any questions for them, we'll make sure that they are available. We are looking to take a vacant piece of ground there at 400 South Main Street and put a new QuickTrip there. The building will be just under 6,000 square feet, and we'll have two separate canopies. We'll have actually seven MPDs or 14 stations. So if you have any questions, we do have one comment as far as the conditions. We've read the staff report, and we have no other issues with any comments that were made except for on the site plan approval. We do have an issue with Item Number 2, and that is their request for the right-in, right-out only on Main Street. We know that there has been a lot of discussion about the traffic along that. We did do a traffic study that evaluated all of that, and we, our traffic engineer will talk to that point, but we are requesting that that remain a full access. And I'll let Lee go into further explanation as to why we're making that request in order to make sure that we have a successful location, so, Lee?
Good evening, Chairman, Mayor, members of the Commission. My name is Lee... Good evening, Chairman, Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Lee Cannon. I'm a traffic engineer, professional engineer, State of Missouri, working with CBB. Our offices are at 12400 Olive Boulevard in Creve Court. As Gwen mentioned, CBB was engaged to do a detailed traffic impact study for this site. I believe the date on that report is January 2 of 2025, and it should have been submitted as part of your packet. If you have any specific questions about that study, I'd be happy to address them. But we did look at existing traffic, added traffic to the site, the conditions that would be expected at the entrances. And so that information has been provided to the city. City staff and QuickTrip, working in coordination, have already made some concessions and site plan modifications that are incorporated into the site plan that you see in front of you today. There's only really one condition that puts the site in jeopardy from a QuickTrip corporate approval. And I'm not sure how that person did that, but they highlighted it in orange somehow. But here we go, orienting you on the site plan. Main Street is along the bottom of the plan. North is to your left, south is to your right. And this is the access point on Main Street that we're discussing here. We're aware of staff's position in wanting to restrict that access to right-in, right-out. We respect their opinions, but from a technical perspective, I wanted to provide you with my professional opinion as a traffic engineer after having studied this specific issue. First and foremost, I want to address safety. Safety is non-negotiable. And safety comes down to generally traffic flow, which we studied in the report, and also intersection site distance. That's how far you can see in order to make a safe movement turning in or out of a site with the conflicting traffic. The civil engineer, Mr. Cowan with CDI, has made the site distance check and verified that the driveway meets the industry standards for site distance, specifically looking to the north on Pittman, because there's a hill going up and then back down around the location of the Pittman signalized intersection. But it has been studied at the appropriate speed, five miles over the posted speed limit, that you can see far enough to the north to make a safe movement. Obviously, if there's vehicles that are stopped at the signal or stopped to turn into any business along Main Street, there may be a temporary condition where that site distance is blocked. And under the normal rules of operating your vehicle, you would wait until you can see in order to move. But there is physically enough site distance for safe operations under typical standards. The site plan does incorporate good access management. This is a relatively large site with furniture along Main compared to, you know, the remainder of the corridor. There's three adjacent roads, Daniel, Main, and Pittman, and QuickTrip has proposed to put one driveway on each of those furnages. One of the CBB recommendations that you can see up here on the north is that we have indicated a restriction, and QuickTrip has incorporated it into the plan. There'd be no left turns allowed out of the Pittman driveway. There's a small median proposed to be constructed, and there would be appropriate signage and should be ordinances put in place so that could be enforced by law enforcement. If we look along the corridor, this access is pretty similar to what Hucks has, just immediately north of Pittman. They actually have a right-in, right-out driveway immediately north of Pittman, and then a shared full-access driveway also on Main Street. In my opinion, looking at the corridor that's north of Interstate 70, this site has better access control than most of the remainder of the commercial corridor. A lot of the sites are very short frontage and have one or more than one driveway within that frontage. And then, as we look along the corridor, it's my understanding, talking to city staff, that there weren't any locations that were noted as high-hazard locations, and those have similar or worse access management. Lastly, full access on Main dilutes the traffic that has to come to Daniel. So with this way the site is, it's very difficult to make the left out, so we restricted it to Pittman. So we believe that it's important imperative actually to have left turns out at Main Street and left turns out at Daniel Drive to kind of dilute that traffic, so it's not all trying to come out at one place. As part of the plan, though, with Daniel Drive and in coordination with the city staff, QuickTrip is going to be widening Daniel so that there'll be the existing inbound lane and then a second outbound lane, so to provide separate lefts and rights out. And what that does is if there's any waiting time for the lefts to turn out, then the right out won't be impeded. So and let's see, there's already a left turn lane in place along Main to allow for those left turns in and out of the site, and shared with the other businesses that are across the street also turning left and in left out. And then lastly, we have the civil engineer has shown the truck-turning templates. Scroll down to those. Nathan, do you know where those are?
They're the
Here we go. So this is part of the packet. So this illustrates, you know, as generally speaking, the tanker's gonna come from I-70, you know, from the south back to the south. These are articulated, what you call tractor-trailers. But they're generally about a 40-foot wheelbase tractor trailer. So they're the small tractor trailers. So they're not the giant ones that, you might see that are, we go all the way up to 67-foot wheelbase. So they're relatively small, but they can navigate. And they really need this wider opening here to come in and then also to come out of the site based on where the fueling tanks are, the underground fuel storage tanks. We did show that they could also come in, Daniel, if needed. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. As an engineer, I'm not short on words, so my apologies for the detail, but I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Madam Chair.
Richard Seymour.
Thank you. A question I have is, and you brought up the Highway K on the other side of the interstate corridor. I can tell you, you take your life in your own hands trying to pull out left anywhere up Highway K, all the way down to Highway 40. So why we would want to add that to this particular site is beyond me. I've been there. I've been there all hours of the day and night. And I can tell you, unless you're out there at 2:00 in the morning, you may be able to pull out left going south on Main without any issues. But if you're there at 4:00, 5:00 in the afternoon, and you're trying to pull out left on the Main Street, whatever your studies say, and I'm sure you've got good studies or whatever, but if you're trying to pull out there, you're taking your life in your own hands. Thankfully, my insurance company's office is right across the street from there, so I wouldn't have far to walk. But I would, that would be a deal breaker for me. So.
I would agree with you that that south of I-70, Route K is a much different street than Main Street. If you look at the character, and I don't know if that I have an aerial, do you have an aerial here? But north of I-70, the character of the road is small lot commercial, a lot of different businesses on either side of the road. South of K, it's a suburban highway. It's a higher speed. There's wide shoulders. There's big box retailers. It's a much different experience on the south end. And if you look at Route K in Mexico, QuickTrip there, you know, their access is designed for a suburban highway. And so we do take that into account working with QuickTrip. I think I've done 70 or 80 studies for QuickTrip over the last 30 years. So we do focus on context-appropriate site planning. This is a site where they're gonna put a smaller C-store because of the size of the site, also because of the anticipated, you know, utilization by the patrons of where we are in a community. They have seven dispensers at this site. You know, some of the more high-volume sites might have 10 dispensers. So seven dispensers is on both sides, you fuel on both sides. So you'll have 14 potential vehicle fueling positions, whereas other higher-volume sites, they might have more dispensers. But again, I think this fits with the character of Main Street, O'Fallon, not Highway K.
Oh, sir, may I add one more. As you notice, coming off I-70 south on Main, that bottleneck's right there in the afternoon, where it kind of bottlenecks down, plus your speed limit drops. So that means there's more vehicles trying to get in, whether or not they're slowing down. These are people that were running 70, 80, 90 miles an hour down Highway K, or excuse me, down Interstate 70, coming off, going north on Main Street. So I've been there and seen it, and most everybody sitting up here has been there at different times of the day. And that is very, very unsafe to try to pull out to go toward Highway K on Main Street.
I respectfully disagree with you about the safety of that issue, and I might point to, and we could investigate that further if need be, but I don't believe turning out of Hucks, you know, to turn left has created a inordinate, crashes have occurred, I'm sure. But I don't believe that it's known as a high-hazard location for the city, and it's a very similar situation. The lanes are the same. The speed limit is the same. And I'm, do I have that right, the name of the user, Hucks? The site that's on the northeast corner of Pittman and Main. Is that correct, Hucks? Okay. So again, people are making safe choices for the most part in navigating that. But we could look into that crash data. It would be a very similar expectation about crash data, turning left out of Hucks versus left out of this proposed site.
Well, I've been on this commission over 20 years, and we've tried to make sure anything coming in off of Main Street, or especially Highway K, has been right-in, right-out. Have we missed a few? Maybe. Has there been some in there like Hucks? Hucks just went through a remodel. They've been on that corner. They were there when I got here, 25, 30 years ago. So I don't know how long Hucks has been there. But I'm not opposed to asking Hucks to go ahead and do a right-in and right-out there, but I'm not sure what their response would be.
Councilwoman Cook.
I just have a question. So at West Pittman and Main Street, that's a lighted intersection. Why would you make that no-left turn where people could come out of there and come to a light to make a left back on the Main Street, rather than coming out onto Daniel, which is not a lighted intersection? Why would you do that?
That is an excellent question. And really, it has to do with the site itself. The site that is under contract by QuickTrip is, does not include this business. Is that a chiropractor? We believe that's the chiropractor here on Pittman. So in order to access the property that's available for purchase, the driveway must go approximately in this location, approximately directly across the street from the existing Hucks driveway on Pittman. The distance between the stop bar, and I don't have a great rendering, let me see if the site plan shows that better. Okay, this is a, this is a good example. Okay, so if you are in this position, can you see my cursor on the screen? If you're in this position and you wish to leave, I wish we could get to the signal on Pittman at Main Street. That would be wonderful. But the fact that this driveway is close to this stop bar for that left and also this through, there's no space for this vehicle to turn left and get into the left turn lane most of the time. There's one, one to two cars are gonna make it so that this left turn vehicle may hang up in the eastbound through lane. So it's unfortunate. I really wish we could get to that. If the chiropractic space was available, and we could push the driveway back here further east, but that's not possible. So we don't believe that's appropriate. We're just, this is the safety issue that we came up with and said, this is not safe. We don't need to allow that left. And CBB made that recommendation to QuickTrip, and QuickTrip put that on the plan.
Yeah, this would be a lot easier to feel warm and fuzzy about if you could direct the traffic out to a lighted intersection rather than out onto Daniel. And that's so close to, you know, 70. And like you said, the traffic starts backing up, and it's just adding more and more, more traffic to that area. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah. One of the issues with driving is that driving takes a skill and attention. And as traffic engineers, we try to provide the, an appropriate amount of safe access and study those issues. And again, this is very similar to what you might have at Hucks with the left turns coming out of this site. That location hasn't created a known, and we can talk to the staff or collect additional data if needed from the police department, but to my knowledge, it's, the Hucks and the other businesses along Main Street haven't created unduly hazardous conditions. And again, that's from crash experience. Did crashes happen? Did crashes almost happen? Maybe. Is it scary sometimes to drive down heavily traveled roadways? Sure. But we have to pay attention. We have to make good choices. And crash history demonstrates whether it's working or not.
Well, one difference between this site and Hucks is that on Hucks, what you can do is if you wanted to go left into it, you could go down to the light, make a left on Pittman, and then make a left in. And usually, there's not a whole lot of traffic coming from the east to not allow you to make a left there. And if you're leaving it, you can make a right off of Pittman to get to the light, which is a little bit easier than making a left out of, onto Pittman to get to the light.
I agree with you there, from what you might expect people to do. But we did a traffic count, actual traffic counts. I could identify the days if necessary. And I would have expected, you know, peak hour, you know, rush hour, morning rush hour, afternoon rush hour. I would have expected a lot of the Hucks traffic to turn right out of this driveway and then make a movement to use the signal to turn left or go across the roadway. But in our count in the morning, only 11 cars did that. And in the afternoon, only 14 cars did that. So a lot of the Hucks traffic, and Hucks, I haven't done a lot of work for Hucks, but they are a similar use, but they are not as heavily utilized as QuickTrip. But with only 11 cars in the morning and 14 in the afternoon making that movement, there's a lot of Hucks traffic coming out of their full-access driveway on Main Street. I don't have a count of that, although we could get one. But what I do know is that what you just mentioned and what I would have agreed as a great assumption is just not true from the data we collected.
Well, I would imagine maybe what you see is people making that, there's a right-in, right-out when you first pass Pittman into the Hucks. I've seen that a lot, because I drive this road every day.
Yes, ma'am.
And I also have seen, you know, and then I would think if they're using that full-access, they're probably going outright and going north. So you can't probably do So, you can probably do that in the morning and make left out of there.
But again, the, the data would suggest if people want to turn left out of QuickTrip in the morning and the afternoon, to go to the interstate, people are going to Hucks, they probably want to do pretty similar movements. And so, the, there's eleven in the morning coming out onto Pittman to the signal, and there's fourteen in the afternoon. There's a lot of cars turning left out of Hucks onto Main Street. And if, if we need to demonstrate that through a count, we can. But my opinion is that there are cars that are doing that, and from the lack of concern over crash data at that location, leads me to believe that this can be done safely at Main Street and at Daniel Drive.
I just, I have a question. Why would you count the number of cars that are turning right out, but not count the ones that are coming left out of that full-access onto Main?
Oh, so, I just happened to have the Hucks driveway on Pittman in my study, because it's located directly across the street from the QuickTrip-proposed driveway. We didn't count the Hucks access further up on Main as part of this study.
Yeah. So, basically, you don't have any real data on that. You're just making some assumptions based on what you think might be the traffic at Hucks in the morning.
Yes, ma'am. But again, I, I'm a civil engineer by trade, but I only do traffic impact studies. That's all I do. Transportation is all my company does. I don't do site plans, I don't do water plants. So, I believe that my engineering opinions are very solid based on thirty years of experience.
Commissioner Boush.
Madam Chair, thank you. Based on the numbers you just said, I'd have to agree with Councilwoman Cook, that I think it would be fair to you to have the same access onto Pittman, meaning that they could go left and not forcing everybody to go right, would be advantageous. And you just said there's eleven and fourteen for the period that you said, two different times, and you're kind of penalizing yourself to have your consumers and your customers or guests only be able to go right to catch that light. I think it'd be ideal to have you to go left on Pittman. That's just my thought. Secondly, I would, and maybe David, you could lead in, but this intersection to the entrance that you're talking about on Number Two, the suggestions to not be right-in, right-out, this is very similar to Highway K in Mexico. Pretty close, right? You've got the big left turn onto K from Mexico where that QuickTrip is currently located, and then you've got the left-in shortly right after the turn lane. So, I think that they're very similar, the way it looks, and I think you guys are looking for a left turn into the front entrance. Is that correct? Left-in, right?
Yes. But, at Mexico and K, again, it's like a suburban highway, the driveway to QuickTrip is at the far back of the property. It's a much larger piece of property, so it's located a better distance from the signal on both Mexico and K.
So, you're, what you're saying is that you can't do it on this one? You're suggesting no left turn from the northbound?
That was my recommendation, yes, sir.
Okay, and QuickTrip's concern is that that condition's on their right turn right out, correct?
I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. We're talking about the north driveway to Pittman, correct?
No, that was, I just said I think you should have the same access on that as Hucks, right? Then your main entrance, that's a right turn right out, that is what we, is what staff recommended.
That is correct.
Number Two. QuickTrip asked that that be reconsidered, right? And so...
Yes, that is correct, sir.
I was trying to validate, I think it should be reconsidered, and you just told me, "No," so...
Again, again, I, my mistake, I, I thought, hold on, let's see. I thought you were still discussing this topic.
No.
Apologies.
I just wanted you to have the fairness of the people.
Thank you.
The other one was, is I think that entrance on Main Street would be very similar to the entrance onto the QuickTrip on K in Mexico for the entrance off of Mexico. So, I'm in your favor there, too.
Okay.
Unless David and the city felt differently there, but I just think it, I use that frequently, maybe not as much as others, but it's not easy, but it's navigatable. And then the only other concern that I had is Daniel Road is a no outlet, and I would just like to make sure that there's some type of signage or something there, so people don't get frustrated with traffic and try and go left and realize, "Oh, no, this is a neighborhood," right? Because I wouldn't want to live in that neighborhood and face that.
I think it makes a lot of sense that, that there'd be a sign there. So, in, in some instances in the past, communities have asked that there be a sign here to tell people they're not allowed to turn left. And then, the people that live back there can't go home if they happen to visit the QuickTrip. So, I think the, like, no outlet, or some sort of a sign there, that's, you know, no access to Interstate 70, some signage that tells them that, as opposed to posting a no-left-turn sign, and then the police having to say, "Oh, well, okay, you turned left, but you're a resident." So, it's a lot easier to understand and to enforce fairly with, with, but to, yes, definitely have a sign of some sort.
Okay. David, is there a reason why we would recommend a only right-in, right-out and have them, I would say, less advantage of others on that road?
Yeah, it really kind of boils, we were looking at it, I mean, it's really a safety issue, the way we were viewing that. That left-out is really going to be blocked by, when you're looking, coming out of there looking north, I mean, I understand the sight distance, but Lee kind of alluded to it, there's usually cars parked at that stoplight and turning left wanting to go, you know, through there. And we think that's going to be blocking that view, so...
And then what about on Main? What was the concern about that only being a right-out?
That's what I was talking about. I was talking about the left, the left-out.
Okay.
From QuickTrip onto Main.
Okay.
What's your question, though? Did I misunderstand it?
So, right now, the recommendation is right-in, right-out, correct?
Yes, sir.
On Main Street?
Yep.
So, no left turn, so if you're coming north, or headed south, you couldn't turn left into QuickTrip, correct?
You'd turn left at Pittman.
At the stoplight, but not on the roadway.
Or Daniel, you'd have the two choices that way.
Okay.
And just for reference, if, if you're at any one of these existing driveways, and there's a car that's waiting to turn left over in this area, again, it's kind of backwards, right? So, if you want to turn left out of scooters, and there's a car waiting to turn into this facility or this facility, then you may not be able to physically see those northbound cars. That happens every location along this corridor. So, physically, if there's no cars there, you can see. So, the normal operating procedures and the model traffic ordinance say, "Wait till that car moves so that you can see to safely maneuver." And that, that's happening every day at every intersection along this segment.
Let me say something. The other thing I, I'd just kind of like to mention is, to Lee's point, crash data, looking at Main Street, you all are doing work along there, and if this was truly an overall issue, I would have expected you would have put a median in there. You could have median-bound all of Main Street. But I don't think that's what the constituents, the citizens, the folks that are using this corridor want to see. And if that's not the case, that you're going to median-bound the entire Main Street and therefore give us all the same access, that's where our frustration lies, in that now we're being limited by access for a new business that's taking over vacant ground. And so, that's why we do request that condition to be removed. Again, my very first question with Lee, when we dealt with all of this, was, can this be done and can it be safe? The last thing we want to do is make a multimillion-dollar investment to something that's not going to work. And I will say also to Pittman, I agree, I would love to have them come out of Pittman, because then they can use, no, I'm not going to, then they can use that light. But in one of our very first meetings, one of the very first comments from the folks that we met with in that meeting that were on City's staff, okay, it was the mayor, I wasn't going to say his name, but the mayor specifically said, "I don't want you to make left turns out on Pittman because it stacks." The staff had already kind of indicated that, and that was one of the very first things he said, was that lefts out on Pittman are going to be a problem. They're going to get in those stacking lanes, they're going to stack into our site. And so, yes, so we have to look at, either we throw all of those left turns to Daniel, which he completely says is not a wise idea, or we go on and have this full access off onto Main in order that we can make these turning movements, they can be dispersed better. I'm a gal, I don't like making left turns. I'm a good driver, but I am a gal that doesn't like to make left turns. And if it's five o'clock, and I'm in there getting my, you know, my Diet Coke and my hot dog, I'm not going to be making a left turn out of there. I mean, let's be realistic. We're talking about something that obviously is going to function much better during non-peak times than peak times. And I think people that are reasonable are going to common sense, go to Daniel, they'll stack into Daniel a little bit, but that's where they're going to make their left turns. But for the rest of the time, we, in order to have that flow, and again, and you all know this, we don't go to where, we're not going to bring traffic, we're going to be pulling off more traffic from what's already existing there. So, we do believe those turning movements can be done safely, and it's not me, because I'm just a gal who, you know, works for QuickTrip and loves QuickTrip, and is proud that I can talk about QuickTrip, but he's the one, that his reputation more than anything is on the line, and he would not be standing before you saying that this is a safe movement, unless he honestly felt it was the case. He also does, he, we mentioned that, he mentioned that he's done, I think it's actually close to a hundred. We go back and look at those studies. We go back and trace and make sure that is what he telling us working, and making sure that we have the right counts, that everything was looked at and done. And so, we don't, you know, have him here lightly. He comes with a lot behind him of knowing how our sites function and having that, you know, 2020 vision as well, to feed into his experience when he does these traffic studies. So, that's my...
This is a public comment, so we're going to take a minute and listen to the comments of the two people who filled out comment cards.
Okay.
So, if you'll step aside for a minute. Mr. Deanoff?
Thank you, members of the commission. My name is Ronny C. A.C. Deanoff, City Public Advocate. First of all, I support QuickTrip. They're a great corporate asset to our city. This commission obviously does not have the guts or fortitude to protect children or families of our community in terms of keeping them away from unsafe sales and also traffic regulations. Let me remind the commission, we are a home-rolled charter city that was adopted by the voters of our city. We can add where state statute is silent and go above state statute in many cases. Chapter 89 of the revised state statutes of Missouri states that this commission has authority, sole authority, along with the city council, to place conditions and restrictions. There's court case law. I've been to the city of St. Charles City Council and testified there many times, and upon my request, they have made sure that no video gaming machines are put into gas stations, or bars, or restaurants. And I could prove on video and meeting minutes that this happened many times in the last six months. Now, fortunately, QT is a great corporate citizen. There will be no kratom sales, no hemp products that are sold here, and no gaming terminals. At least, that's their corporate policy that they have attributed to. This commission has made a lot of cluster tonight for our city, and especially our future of downtown O'Fallon, and I'm kind of ashamed of what decisions you've made. Let me go on the record, we have zero traffic safety law enforcement on South Main Street. Let me say that again, zero traffic safety enforcement on safe on South Main Street. There are intersections that are blocked, and it's a cluster at many intersections. I have to be adamant that these are heavy-traveled intersections at Pittman. The light is always stacked, and obviously, many of you have visited this site during the day to see what occurs at the intersection of East Pittman and South Main Street. I have to be adamant that South Main Street has a no-right-in or right-outs. Safety is required here. We don't want to lose any family's life or any livelihood of any one of our residents. And QuickTrip should be in favor of this, and evidently, they're not. I highly support condition number two. Also, Pittman Avenue also needs a right-in and right-out, because obviously, many commissioners have not been there to see the stacking problems. I asked for an ADA, Americans with Disabilities compliant, ten-foot, instead of staff-recommended eight-foot, multi-use walkway along South Main Street, along East Pittman, and along Daniel Drive. We need a walkable, bikeable, and multi-use facet trail system and walkway, and this is a corporate neighbor.
Mr. Deanoff.
That needs to pony up and be part of the neighborhood and make the improvement.
Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you. You don't need to be disrespectful.
All right. We also have Mr. Mike Baumann that would like to speak regarding this item on the agenda.
My name's Mike Baumann. I'm a registered architect and owner of Number Two Daniel, where I've owned and operated Baumann Architects for the past nine years. Our property is immediately south of the proposed QuickTrip project. Overall, we're in support of the QuickTrip project, but have some concerns. Those concerns are centered around storm and sanitary sewers and traffic. Our basement lower level at Number Two Daniel backs up with sanitary sewer waste on large rain events. This used to occur three to four times a year, but it's now down to one to two times a year. There's been a lot of recent sewer work downstream of us, which has indeed helped, but we still have some issues. What happens is the storm system gets overwhelmed, then backs up the sanitary, which then backs up into our lower level. City storm and sanitary system backup, I already said that, sorry about that. With the QuickTrip development being immediately upstream of us, it will only add volume and duration to the already taxed storm and sanitary system. City staff has reached out to me, and we're going to get together here in a few days. I'm confident that there can be a solution to that. I have no problem with that. The next issue that, or challenge, let's call it a challenge that I have, is with traffic. The QuickTrip development is invariably going to add traffic to the area and surrounding streets. This is not all bad, and if managed appropriately, can be a win-win for local residences, businesses, the city, and QuickTrip. The biggest challenge we have to do is with, is to deal with is safe and convenient access to and from the site without negatively impacting neighbors. That's my neighbor right there, Mr. Seymour, across with the State Farm.
Oh, oh.
Yeah. I'm at Number Two Daniel. Okay. The proposed site plan, along with staff recommendations, provides only one full access to the site, and this is from Daniel Drive. With the remainder of my limited time, I'm going to focus on the impacts of Daniel Drive. The intersection at Daniel Drive in South Main already has a city-installed "do not block" intersection sign. Okay? This is as a result of northbound traffic that already backs up far south of Daniel Drive. This sign has been there for many, many years, and can take several minutes to exit Daniel Drive. In fact, at lunchtime today, before lunch, it was backed up south of Daniel Drive. Per the traffic engineer's calculation, this will result in one hundred vehicles per hour exiting from Daniel Drive onto Main Street. And over a, that's over a twelve-fold increase from what is experienced there right now. We only get eight out of there right now. That's per the traffic study. Per the traffic engineer's estimation of sixty-nine point two seconds per vehicle to exit from Daniel Drive, that equates to a hundred and fifteen minutes of waiting per hour. Last I checked, there's only sixty minutes in an hour, so it's going to result in perpetual backup at Daniel and South Main Street.
You have thirty seconds left.
Really? Okay. The above situation will severely, will severely limit access from Daniel Drive, including access to the business and the residences of Daniel Drive. access to the business and the residences of Daniel Drive. As far as a business owner, if I wanted to redevelop my site, I don't want to be limited by adding modest amounts of traffic to Daniel Drive because it's already been blown up. Okay? I just want to make sure I, my right to redevelop that stays in place. We've got some talented engineers on staff here. I think that the turning motions and that represented coming out of HUCs has been misrepresented. I think a lot of those do go to Pittman, and I think this site, as an overall development, is missing one piece, and that's that chiropractic office. If they can get that, they can make a left onto Pittman, have full access, and everything is solved. Okay?
Baumann, your time's up.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question for Mr. Baumann?
It's up to you. You're the chairman.
Okay. Mr. Baumann, can you come up here a second? I want to ask you. I read your email. No, go, I mean, go to the podium, but I read your email that you had written to the city, and I, you basically said everything, the same thing. So your main, you're, you're, just to sum up what you're saying, you're saying you don't think this is a doable site without having that corner. Is that what you're basically saying?
It's a challenge. I don't want to poo-poo QuickTrip. I would love to see a QuickTrip there.
Yeah.
Trust me, trust me. I love taquitos, iced tea, I'll be up there every, every day. But I'm concerned about the traffic, and I'm concerned about my investment, small as it is, at Number Two Daniel, is going to be impacted by this. Again, I will, I want everybody on this team here to work together and make QuickTrip happen. I'd love it to happen. I think it has benefits to Number Two Daniel, but I'm worried about the traffic, and I'm worried about my rights to develop that in the future. And as Mr. Seymour mentioned early, make it a left out of there, and we're going to be generating more traffic. We're pulling off traffic off of, off of South Main, but we're generating new trips coming from Highway 70. Everybody that's running east or west sees QuickTrip right here, they're getting off there, and they're going to have to go south. Every one of those will have to go south.
Right.
Yep.
I think that's just like the Starbucks. People are going to get off at 70.
Starbucks.
Yeah.
To the 10th power.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I totally agree. I think that, you know, both of these are great to the city, but I do think we have to be very careful here because we have some, we already have issues without these two facilities, and...
Yep. One of my employees was involved in an accident leaving my drive, leaving Daniel about two years ago. So I'm aware of that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I'm chairman.
Commissioner Seymour?
Thank you.
I've just got one question for David. We've got...
Button, please.
How long you been doing this?
Hit my button here.
How long you been doing this?
Since yesterday.
David, we've got one, two, three QuickTrips on Highway K and one on Bryan Road that I, maybe two. Are they all right in and right out?
I'm thinking through this. The ones on Highway K, I do know the entrance to the one at Mexico on Highway K is limited, the...
That's right in and right out.
That one there.
It's only right in.
Just right in.
The one on Highway K in Mexico?
It's a three-quarter.
No, 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 no. The one, Mexico Road, on Mexico Road is only a right in. Now, on Highway K, Mexico and K is right out, right in, and a left in.
Yeah.
The one that, down farther, down K?
Right in, right out.
Is, no. That's all full access.
Are you sure?
No.
No, no.
Not, there's a median that restricts the left end to...
That's why I was, that's why I was asking David.
You've got a median that restricts left in.
Yeah.
I have an aerial photo.
You have to go around to the backside.
Okay. Can I, can I, can I ask one question? Everybody is saying about the chiropractic office, when we talked with QuickTrip, they asked, and the price was too expensive for them to do it. So their due diligence, they tried to get the chiropractic. Chiropractic said no. Here's, here's my, hopefully it's a solution. Maybe staff won't agree with it, maybe QuickTrip won't agree with it, but here's what I'm saying. We'll give you the full access. Come back in a year after you're open, and we'll see how things are working. If things are not working, then we may get the right in, right out.
Are you talking about on Main Street or on...
On Main Street.
Okay.
To me, the one coming out onto Pittman is make a left, you're not getting maybe one, maybe two cars, if that. What I'm saying is the one on Main Street, which is you wanting the full access. I'm saying, you know, we have to look at both things here, you know, we got to see how things work, you know? And if things are working fine, then fine. If not, you know, we have to come, some sort of agreement that says, because you guys are going to know, you know, if business is not going well trying to make a left or whatever, I'm just saying, you know, there's got to be some sort of agreement here somewhere that, you know...
Is this part of the conditional use permit? Or is this part of the site plan? Because if it's part of the conditional use permit...
Well, you can do it part of the, you can do it as a site plan with a condition, if you come back in a year to see, I don't know, Stephanie, I don't know.
I would, well, actually, you could put it on both, but I would definitely do it on the CUP.
Okay. Now...
If it's on the CUP, that's going to be a problem, because that would then revoke our ability to, to operate, because that's the basis of the CUP.
Well, you could revoke your ability to operate if you don't comply with what, if the city says, "We want a right in, right out" there, and you would have to put one in.
Well, who's paying for that? It's a city going to have to pay for, or is QuickTrip?
We wouldn't have an issue with that. The issue becomes, though, we've already invested millions of dollars, and now we have a restricted access. And, and I think that it's something that we can discuss. I, I understand your point, and I, I see, you know, the, the ability. The question is, what would the triggers be? What would the criteria be? There's a lot for that consideration to be made, as far as if that's not working, then what...
I understand what you're saying, and I, you know, I understand as a business owner what you guys deal with on a much smaller scale, but, but, you know, I, I think, I think we've got an issue here that there's a lot of discussion, including with the neighbor who came here tonight. My recommendation is we table this.
I'm, 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 I don't, I know they've worked with staff, and staff, you know, I know they've gone back and forth with, I think the only issue here with this location is the full access on Main Street. And I know they've gone in, I know staff's wanting the right in, right out, they're wanting to, you know, there's got to be some sort of compromise where...
As far as the gentleman that spoke, I appreciate your comments. I did give him my card. Nathan was going to get up and basically talk about drainage, but it's what time, and that's boring. What we will say is, obviously, obviously, we're going, it's going to be make, it's, it's going to be better, because we're going to take, you know, obviously, we're going to have to go to city, with city to get permits, look at all that drainage, all that sanitary, we've dealt with that before with you all. I do not anticipate drainage being an issue. I think what we'll have to put in, in order for us to go into that lot, is actually going to help that situation with the gentleman at Number Two Daniel. But we, I, I had Nathan here, and Nathan can chat with him about that further, and he also has my card. We'll be happy to visit with him and find out what's going on, because it actually could end up helping the plans develop even further. So that I'm not concerned about. My question would be, if that condition was moved, removed this evening, could it be added on at council in order that this could be moved forward? And then between the time of the plan commission and the council, we can talk about that further and, and see what, what that looks like.
And actually, yes, it can be, because you have, the first reading is next Thursday, and then two weeks from next Thursday, which is in three weeks, is the final reading. So basically, we have three weeks, if I'm not mistaken, Debbie?
Yes.
We've got three weeks to get it. So the condition can be added or removed or whatever, either next week or two weeks from then.
So I, I do believe your, your suggestion definitely has merit. We would just need to probably flush it out a little bit further before we're comfortable with it. But one of the things that was brought up that is a condition, which is why I know the mayor is, is wanting to move this forward, and we want to move this forward, is if we can get through this process, we can hopefully sync it up with Phase 2, and with the AMRIN, and what we're doing. If we can get through our approvals, and we can get construction plans developed, it's possible we could start construction by the end of the summer, late to, late summer, which would then sync up with when the, working with AMRIN and, and what needs to occur across that. If it wasn't for that, we'd be like, fine, you know, but timing-wise, this is something that we're ready to, to move on, but I do not have a green light unless we have that full access. Lee was going to come up and talk about the fact that this gentleman did help make our point in that the more we have the full access and Daniel, that disperses those turning movements and prevents that stacking up as much, because they have two places to go, and especially during non-peak times. Lee was also going to talk about the fact that we're adding those lanes, those right turns can flow out easier, and those making left turns will have their own lane to do so. And there won't be, it'll be wider, it'll be cleaner, that road will be built further up, so when you're making that right-hand turn, it's, it's going to be much more comfortable to do that. They'll have some wiggle room on Daniel, so...
One question for Lee. The full access, is that where somebody can turn right, turn left, and right in?
All four movements, left in, left out, right in, right out. Yes, sir.
So basically, it'd be a three-lane?
Oh, yes. I, I had proposed that this be marked with one inbound lane and separated by striping left and right out.
Okay, so it's three-lane?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Cook?
Thank you. You know, as I look at the different businesses up and down Main Street, most of them have open access.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they really do. And for us to, to restrict QT, I mean, as much as I think it's going to add a lot of traffic, I, when I look at the other businesses along Main Street, they all have the open access. And so, I have to think, maybe what we're doing by restricting them is not the correct thing to do. It doesn't seem to cause an issue with the other businesses that are there. I mean, we've got banks and Total Access, and Taco Bell, and just everything all everywhere. And so, it seems to flow. So hopefully, we can work it out.
What's the criteria for that? How many accidents, or how many close calls? How many times do police come? I mean, what's the, what's the cutoff on that?
To me, Curtis, to me, that would be something that QuickTrip and staff needs to work out. To me, I'm, I'm going to make a motion for have the full access, because then they have to come to the council, and the council's going to, basically, because you can make, you can make the approval for this right in, right out, and the council can basically say, "No, we're going to give them..."
Right, I know, we're just advisory.
We're, I know, you're, we're just an advisory, so, you know...
Make a note of that. We just advise, okay?
You're just now learning that, Curtis?
But, but...
No, I know that.
To me, I don't know what the criteria would be. To me, that would be something with QuickTrip, the police department, and staff, engineering streets, and everybody else have to get together to, to come up with some sort of thing, but, you know, I'm going to make a motion for approval with the full access on Main Street, and if...
Before you do that?
Well...
Make sure Howard wants to say something.
I'm not, I'm not doing it yet.
Okay, okay.
But I just want to make sure...
Well, the whole thing is not a picnic, you know?
Oh, I know that. And I agree, I agree with Councilwoman Cook that every business along Main Street has a full access.
Right.
So why are we going to restrict one?
Well, I don't know that we are, but whatever.
Commissioner Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I had a concern about, besides traffic, is the drainage from your parking lot onto Daniel. And I was proposing that a grate be put across that drive to collect any water running that way to keep it off of Daniel.
We are, sir.
I didn't see it on the plan, that's why I...
I'm sorry.
The other comment that I would like to make is that with an access, any exit on the Main Street, there is no stacking in the parking lot, because of, the pumps are right there and everything. So we all know there's traffic issues, blocked issues, making a left turn and everything. And I don't know where those cars are going to be stacking and waiting to make that left-hand turn, which then forces everybody to go up to Pittman and make an illegal left-hand turn, because they can't get out of the parking lot. So, I mean, those things all need to be looked at, and, you know, it's great to get an access, but where are those cars going? Because nobody will grant them a hole to get through.
Well, I can, I can address the, the drainage question, but it is hard to see, and I'm, it's easily dismissed here, but there is a, there is a grate, strip drain across that, that entrance there that collects, just happens to be right stacked on top of that...
Thank you very much.
Underground collection pipe. And yes, as you're all aware, city, city requirements of, of stormwater detention for, to match the two-year and 100-year storm events will be detained in a onsite detention basin to mitigate that, any extra added stormwater that's created by the imperviousness of the site.
And just a point of information, what we're requesting is the removal of condition two from the site plan approval. The CUP doesn't have that condition, the site plan does, and that's our request. Thank you.
All right. Members of the commission, any other comments? If not, do we have a motion regarding this item?
Wade, don't want to put you on the spot, but, and I know you, and I know staff is wanting the, you know, the right in, right out, because of the site distance, but I'm just, give me, you're, you're the engineer, bub.
Um, every site's different. I know there's been different sites mentioned tonight. Every location's different, so you have to take different things into consideration, right? Main Street, as Lee pointed out, is a, a different area, right? It's a different feel, it's denser, driveways are denser. There is a lot of traffic on Main Street, we all know that, and, you know, that's not going to change. This will add to the traffic. There's certainly things I agree with that have been said, and there's things I disagree with that have been said. Mr. Baumann, as he mentions, and as Lee mentions, if you move all that traffic to just Daniel, that's, that's a lot more traffic. And I agree, if you can disperse that, there's certainly a benefit to that. I think staff's main concern, as, as it's been pointed out, is turning left out of QuickTrip. If you have vehicles parked in that left turn lane going northbound, and vehicles parked going southbound in the left turn lane to turn onto Pittman, that blocks your view. I know we talked about Mexico and their QuickTrip, but, but again, Mexico Road's completely different, right? You don't sit in traffic on Mexico Road. I pretty much can almost always make that turn into Mexic, from Mexico Road into the QuickTrip, right? One of the concerns with staff is vehicles turning out from QuickTrip and making the left, and vehicles turning out of scooters or Jack in the Box and making the left. Both of them wanting to utilize that middle turn lane. So that, that was a concern staff has, and can you shift it to the south a little bit? Now you get closer to Daniel Drive, you can align it across from scooters, but you still have Jack in the Box, too. So, you know, I can argue, they've got five entrances now on that lot, and they're making it one. So that's better. The other concern, and for those that drive Bryan Road, when you go... The other concern, and for those that drive Bryan Road, when you go south of Fize, vehicles turn left into the QuickTrip, and there's about 400 feet, and you see accidents there, rear ends.
That's Darden Prairie.
At Darden Prairie, I know. In this case, it's only 200 feet from that signal. Again, different road, right? 40 miles an hour, 45, people drive pretty quick on Bryan Road, whereas this is 30 miles an hour. But one of the other concerns is vehicles coming through that signal and going from 30, 35 to zero to turn then left, and if there's another one that's wanting to turn, they're backing up into the southbound, and they may get rear-ended. So those are different concerns. I'd love for everybody to turn on to Pittman and use that. I don't know how we can make that happen. This is a tough site. It's long and narrow. I love QuickTrips too. I'll go there all the time as well, so. But, I mean, Main Street is a heavily traveled quarter. It's probably actually better when traffic's backed up because then people let people in and out at traffic that's just sitting there, so. Our main concern is, yeah, not just those coming out turning left, but also those coming in that are going southbound, so.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Howard?
As a point of order, the site plan, does that still go to the city council?
No.
It's on the consent calendar.
Is it site plan as well, or just?
It goes on the consent calendar, correct? No, it does not.
No, just the conditional use permit would tonight. But Stephanie did say that should be on the conditional use.
It could be.
It could be, yeah. To, I guess, could that be a new condition on the conditional use and remove the one off the site plan, if that's what you want to do?
Can you do that?
Well, I, I would just.
Stephanie?
I'd remove it, to me, I would remove it off of the site plan, leave the conditional use permit, and let the council decide.
But then you're approving a site plan without, if we approve it without it, then we.
Understood, but if it goes on the conditional use, then they have to, they have to live with that on the conditional use.
Stephanie, do you agree with that?
I think that there was a provision in the ordinance, though, that was amended not too long ago to allow the council to consider site plans. I'm going to take a look at that really quick.
So while she's doing that, I'm quick, so the entrance on Pittman is right in, right out?
Correct.
Right in, right out, left in.
Not, is it left in? Is it three-way?
Lee, the one on Pittman is the left in? You're coming, you're heading west on?
Pittman.
Right in, right out, left in.
Yes.
Three-quarter.
Three-quarter. Here's another one for you.
Yes?
What about a no-left turn on the Main Street from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.?
That's going to be your peak hours, isn't it?
Well, it's peak hours, but it goes to Lee's point. When we, when we talked about all that, it's, you're then backing up Daniel, and you don't give people those options to disperse those left turns out.
And I'll partly agree with that, but the thing is, if, if I'm heading north in the morning, and I stop at QuickTrip, and I come out of QuickTrip, I'm going to head north. If.
Yes. So you're making a right out?
Right in, right out.
Yeah.
And if you're heading home, and you're heading north, you're going to make the right in, right out. And I, you know, to me, is if you're heading south in the morning, instead of trying to beat the traffic, you're going to hang a left on Pittman and hang a right into QuickTrip, and then you're going to, you know, make a left on Daniel. So, you know, it's, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure something out.
I hear you.
That's, I mean, that's what I would think would be the normal pattern, is if you're coming south and you want to stop at QuickTrip in the morning before you hit the highway, you're going to make a left on Pittman to get in there, and then you're going to have to come back, you know, you're going to, it's almost be impossible to turn left.
No, you turn right on Pittman, go down to Sandrin, and get on the highway that way.
Yeah, well, if you go on Sandrin, then you have to go all the way over and go behind, you can't get on the highway at Sandrin unless you take a right.
Sure you can.
Yeah, right here.
Go on Sandrin and hang a left, go by Slumberland, and you're on the highway.
Oh, there, oh, that exit, okay. But you still have to go back over 70 to get there, so.
Let me just say this. If he, we, we have, to several points, this is a challenging site. It's a little tight for us. We would have loved to have the chiropractor as well. He at first didn't want to sell, and then it was, you know, pie in the sky, and we could make it work. You know, when Lee said, you know, because he does all of his stuff, and then he tells me the good, bad, and the ugly, and the first thing that he said was the left turns on Pittman, which we've all covered. But then we had the discussion about Main Street and where that drive needed to go and all of that. Had he said, Gwen, this will not work unless you go to a right in, right out, we wouldn't be here because we would have killed the site. So on the same token, that's why we have him. So all that to say, we have looked at this a great deal. We appreciate all the time the city staff and, you know, Wade, I definitely appreciate your comments because I feel like truly, we are in a gray area. Could things happen? Yes. Is it more likely than not? No. Because again, I go back to, if this was such a problematic area, y'all would have put a median down and told everybody, right in, right out for everyone. And you're doing all of that work along there, that you had the ability to do that. And then we talked about if that was restricted, what it would do to Daniel and all of that. So I, where we could comply, where it made, you know, sense, or even, you know, we had things that the staff conceded, and we had things that we conceded, and it's been great to work back and forth, but, and I appreciate that we could come and discuss this tonight because this really was the last big issue. And when you're in the gray, it's never fun. But, you know, do I think we possibly could, you know, continue having this discussion? Yes. You know, whether or not, and let's be honest, if there's something that happens here, we're going to be talking, and it's not going to be a year. It's going to be three months or six months. If this is a cluster, there will be conversations. Because again, if that happens, we're not going to have a functional site. We're not going to have a site, and then we've made an investment, and now, a year from now, no one's going because everybody knows it's just a total cluster, and they're not even going to bother. And we don't want that to happen either. That's why we look at the data and we make sure that we're, you know, basing this on this. So again, I completely appreciate the comments from the staff and the work and all that back and forth. And so I guess that's all I have to say, and she has that information now.
Well, before, I can tell you one thing. I would make a motion to approve the CUP, make a motion to remove Condition Two from the site plan. Because if they need to come back with the revised site plan, because they're not, as Gwen said, they're not starting, hopefully not start construction until later in the year, so we can get everything worked out, then it just basically revised site plan, they would come back and, you know, as, you know, how many revised site plans, David, have we had over the years where, you know, they've changed one thing or the other, and it's basically, they come back to this council and says, we're revising the site plan, QuickTrip at Main and Pittman, and it's just a revised site plan. So to me, putting the condition on it, that's a site plan, and going to the council, and whatever, whatever it is, staff and QuickTrip are still going to work together to see if we can't get this thing worked out. And if it needs to be a revised site plan, then basically it's this little portion of the site plan. So that's going to be my thoughts. But go ahead, Stephanie.
So the language that I was thinking of was only made applicable to Platts.
Mm-hmm.
So, so the site plan does not go to council, there's really no mechanism for council review of that. So if it gets up to council on the CUP, and if council wanted to put that condition on, then they would put it on the CUP.
Agreed, but I still think, to me, you're looking at three or four months for them to get everything worked out and come back with the revised site plan if need be.
Commissioner Howard?
As QT is not going to be happy if, after they get this all built and approved and everything, with the full access, and a year down the road, we realize that it's the biggest nightmare you ever had, and you got to change it to a right in, right out, they're not going to be happy after making millions of dollars investment on this site because it's going to completely change their business model.
Mr. Howard, I'm going to disagree with you because if there is trouble, if there's problems and everything else, they're going to lose business because people are not going to want to go into, go into that business if they're having trouble getting in and out. So to me, yes, I agree with you, but yet I disagree with you because if we come back and says you need to change it, the thing is, they're already going to know that there's a problem, and they're going to be losing business.
And the fact is.
They're not going to want to, I mean, make this investment and then just have to walk away from it.
True. What, the fact that that is a city road, if there is problems along there, the city, a year from now or a year after it's built, could go in and median bound the entire road. It wouldn't be just us, it would be scooters and Jack-in-the-Box and everybody along that pathway. The city would have the ability in the right, since it's their owned road, to go in and put a median in.
Would you? I see a smirk on your face over there, so.
It can be very costly because businesses can claim damage, so.
Yeah. Plus, is there even, is there room for a median in there?
Yes, because we looked at.
Take the middle lane out.
Then you take out the turn lane, so.
Take out the turn lane and put a median in.
So.
All right.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, do we have a motion?
There, make a, for the conditional use permit, motion for approval for staff recommendations, Hennessy.
Second, Cook.
All right.
Were you in or out?
And this is on the conditional use permit?
Were you in or out?
This is a conditional use permit.
So this is a conditional use permit with the plan as presented?
For staff recommendations.
For staff recommendations.
Voting is closed.
All right, so this, this is a motion of a recommendation to the city council to approve the conditional use permit for 418 South Main Street to allow a convenience store with fuel cells, and this is with the staff recommendations on it.
Correct.
Okay. So the next one we have is the site plan.
Motion for, to approve site plan per staff recommendations with the removal of Condition Two.
Second, Boust.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 418 South Main Street with the addition, with the removal of Condition Two. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. All right, and the conditional use permit will be at the next?
Yes, ma'am.
City council meeting?
Next week.
So, all right. The next item on the, the, the next item on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar. On the consent calendar, we have the Stormwater Management and Best Practices Facilities Maintenance Agreement for Circle K at 8630 Highway N, the Detention Basin and Access Easement at Circle K, 8630 Highway N, and the Dire Road Reconstruction Phase One. Do we have a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Mr. Howard?
Commissioner Howard?
I'm chair. I have a question about the Dire Road Reconstruction Project, Phase One, in regards to the location of the crosswalk between the Gatehouse Circle drives. Anybody here to address that?
Go ahead, what's your question? Why are we selected there?
I presume it's due to site distances and everything, but the practicality is, if I'm want to cross at that location, I'm not going to walk down to the center, cross, and come back. I mean, that's just real life, reality. It's, you know, we would be better off to put, you know, warning pedestrian crosswalk signs and then put a crosswalk there at the streets rather than in the middle between them. And we're going to have the same problem down the road anyway. And it's, I don't know, it's just a waste of money to put it there, in my humble opinion.
Yeah, I understand your concern. At the intersections, right, they're widening it out to provide the left turn lane, so you have the three lanes, and you can't really put a median in there. So by doing it in between, number one, it provides farther site distance because there's curves in either direction. So, and then you also have the island in the middle, right? So you're just crossing one lane, you have that safe haven in the middle, and then you have to cross the other. To your point, though, yeah, if people want to cross, if they're going from one side to the other, they're going to cross there. So this helps if somebody's, you know, going down the road or coming from the one subdivision and wants to use the trail, let's say, on, on the north side, but on any roadway, right, people are going to, they're going to cross where they want to cross, they may cross not even at an intersection, right? So, so the people that want to use it, have a safer place, this provides that for them, so.
Thank you, sir.
All right, do we have a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Make a motion of, to recommendation of approval of the consent calendar, Howard.
Do we have a second?
Second, Lexel.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar for the, this evening's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, the consent calendar has been approved. Is there anything else that anyone else has for the commission? Do we have a city council update?
Yeah, so from the January 9th and 23rd city council meetings, there was a conditional use permit for Caladonia Flats, that was approved. The conditional use permit for the telecommunications tower at Monticello Plaza, that was approved. The rezoning and the three conditional use permits for the O'Fallon Sports Complex, those were all approved as well. So that's what we've got.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Noggin?
Thanks, Caroline. I'd just like to give a shout-out to the O'Fallon Street Department, that big blizzard we had in the beginning of January, did a good job clearing the streets, and so thanks for doing that, you guys.
All right, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn the February 6th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.